Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the council meeting of the city of South Fulton. At this time, I would ask that the court call the roll, please.
Mayor William Bill Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Fontan Captain Ralph.
Here.
Councilmember Carmelita Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Helen Zee Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Naima Giliar.
Here.
And Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Mark Baker.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
We will have our invocation by our chaplain, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Let us stand. Let us pray. The gracious God, we come with an attitude of gratitude. O God, we come united together, touching in thought, mind, heart, and soul. Because, O God, we know together, as we pray as a people, as we pray as a city, as we pray with our mayor and our council, Father, we know that great things will happen. So we ask you, O God, if you would interrupt our agenda and make it your agenda, interrupt our plans and make it your plans. So at the end of the day, all that is done will be according to your will and your way. This we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Listed on the consent agenda are the meeting minutes from Tuesday, July 25th, the meeting minutes from Tuesday, August 1st, and also an assignment and assumption of a lease located at 544 Fulton Industrial Boulevard, as agreed to in the intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County.
I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. The property move to second, any discussion?
I have a motion to amend the agenda.
We have a motion to draw down.
So I need you to make that before the two agenda. I need to amend to amend the agenda.
Now, consent to amend the consent agenda or are you talking about the regular?
Oh, yeah. This is consent.
Okay. Just so they know what I need to amend.
Next one, next one. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous, that motion passes.
Next item is the mayor and members of council's approval of the regular meeting agenda.
Now, I would like to make a motion to amend the regular meeting agenda.
To add a resolution that I have to have equal pay for our council part-time staff and direct the city manager to find the funds to pay our part-time staff.
Say. The resolution, Mr. Mayor, did that resolution before you now intitulate?
I currently have a copy of the resolution, yes, Mr. Mayor.
When'd you get it?
Within the last half hour.
I would like to make a preliminary amendment to the resolution. In lieu of us funding seven personal assistants, since our budget is slim, I would like to make a preliminary amendment that we will have our HRT work with our area technical colleges and universities to find us interns.
I reject that amendment. I think that we're gonna have to get to the point where we cannot have things not vetted, placed on our agenda the same night. I have a little heartburn over that. In lieu of that, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Have you had an opportunity to totally vet this resolution?
I have looked at the resolution. It appears there's some tweaking, but I think that it's either could be addressed by amendment or I don't see anything that is on its face in proximity.
Property move to second, we got a second, then. We need both of you to put it on the agenda, right, Mr.? Okay, property move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those who oppose, part of the agenda.
Okay, and what about, you still have to adopt it, is that?
I'm intending to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Property move to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It seems to be unanimous that motion carries. Mr. Clerk, we don't have any proclamation to the resolution, but Madam City Manager, since we don't have any proclamation to the resolution, I would like for you to introduce two new members to our staff.
Yes, sir, I would be delighted to. This week, yesterday, we had two new members join the staff for the city of South Fulton. As I call their names, I would like for them to stand. First, we have Ms. Shota Spikes. She comes to us as our communications director. And then we have Mrs. Teresa Adams, who is the purchasing manager.
Well, welcome both of you. Having a good work. Appreciate you.
Mr. Clerk? Yes. Mr. Mayor and members of council, attention to the public comment portion of today's meeting. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. Your public comment will not exceed thirty minutes. So far, we have received fourteen speakers, so if the residents who are present would please approach the podium when your name is called. I'll call three names at a time. The first three speakers are Ms. Helen Butler, Elmae Holly, and Mr. Wayne Heinz.
Mr. Clerk, do please have everybody come to the microphone to announce their appearance.
The request is being made that as you approach the podium, to please state your name and your address.
For now, if everyone's right.
You begin to go first.
Thank you. My name is Helen Butler, and I'm representing an organization located at 100 Edgewood Avenue. I came again tonight to speak in behalf of the Election Day holiday. We thank all of the city council people who voted in favor of the Election Day holiday. We still believe that this is a very good thing for the city of South Fulton, and would ask that our members of the council again review this and vote in favor of the Election Day holiday. It was, I know you had concern about whether it was gonna be costly, but in light of that, it was going to be a substitute for the holiday Columbus Day. It would mitigate any additional expenses, and we feel that this is a thing that would encourage your citizens and your members of the city of Fulton, South Fulton, to actually become engaged in the electoral process, which is the basis for democracy. And so we would again ask that you would consider that. I also heard that there was some comments and concerns about having input from the employees. Well, if you're gonna have input for employees, I think all holidays should be considered because some may want one holiday versus another holiday. I think when you offer a package of holidays, I think that is what most employees would be happy with, and I base that on twenty years of experience as a vice president of human resources. So I thank you very much for your consideration.
My time starts now. Elmae D. Holly, Field Operations Chair, Henry County. I'm also gonna be the, it's gonna be the candidate for State House Representative for House District 111, Henry County. I'm coming here because I wanna let you know that your city, the South Fulton, for this week, if not for an entirety beyond that, for this week, it is known in the world stage, as you may know, Net Roots Nation Conference of Progressive Leaders is here in Atlanta, and they are talking about the city of South Fulton. They're talking about the checks and balances systems that is in place, and it's because of that that we wanna make sure that that vote goes through for the city holiday, that because the world's attention is focused on this city, that includes the ACLU, that includes Common Cause, a lot of watchdog groups ensure that this city runs right. We do not appreciate secret vetoes made in private. Please have that available. If it burns your heart for last-minute resolutions to make this floor, it should also burn your heart that the citizens here demand for some accountability and transparency, especially now while we have those world leaders here ready to invest their money into the strategies that work, including the Electoral College idea for that day. So with that, I would like you to consider it, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Following Mr. Wayne Heinz, Mr. Greg Pan, and Ms. Beverly Parham.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank y'all for being here tonight. My name's Wayne Heinz, I'm the president of Fulton County Professional Firefighters. I represent about seventy percent of Fulton County firefighters, and I know y'all are understanding of what the firemen do. I've seen them pull off some amazing stuff, save lives, I've seen them save property, I've been in buildings with them, I've watched them do CPR, I've watched them do hand-holding to help somebody out. And what I'm asking for y'all is when they transition over, is a little bit of protection, to the protection of being merit system employees. I know we have a proposal in front of us tonight that they be merit, correction, at-will employees. These employees deserve the protection of merit system. The citizens deserve the protection of merit system so that they will not be frivolous lawsuits, they will not be tied up in legal expenses of trying to determine what's right, what's wrong. We want to see a merit system for these employees because it will help the recruitment and retention of these employees. There's a lot of departments out here that are hiring, and they're offering, they're wanting our firefighters to come down there. So we wanna keep them here serving the citizens that are already paying for and taking care, and citizens they're taking care of. So please both note tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you so very much, and I'm certainly glad that the people of Fulton County have some wisdom to make sure that you got your tax receipts collected. But on that same note, tonight, I'm here to speak for the employees of South Fulton, employees of Fulton County who I represent now in Fulton County. The employees of Fulton County need to know when they come over here to this city that they're going to be protected under merit system. I know you have a proposed system where people can grieve, has been proposed, that people can grieve suspensions, grieve demotion, and grieve termination, and be at-will. Let me just tell you about at-will. At-will is judges at-will state, but who's gonna be, what director will have, you'll give an appeal right because they're at-will employees too. So everybody's gonna be at-will. So if you got good managers, and you got bad employees, you can fire them. And we don't fight for bad employees. But people who come to this city, who work in this city ought to feel that they have a right to appeal through the merit system, that they have an appeal process, not a grievle process, grievle is non-adverse action. That means that it's not a lawsuit paid, they don't lose any money. This may be a working condition, maybe some other situation where they wanna grieve. You can grieve that. And certainly to have peers, peers to listen to the appeal of employees, their own peers to listen to them and say that it'd be more political if it's outside versus inside, it's more political inside than it's outside, because the people on the inside, they have a vested interest to protect, to make sure that people are fired or people keep their job because they wanna be promoted, because if they take care of the folk, they'll get promoted. So listen, brothers and sisters, as I said to the Fulton County Commission, this is a black city, and we're black folks, and not the king and others fought for the rights of us. And organized labor, for those of you who don't know the history, but organized labor funded the Civil Rights Act, that gave you the opportunity to be up there to sit in those seats. So do the right thing. May God prek your heart. And yes, that's right, may God bless you, may God bless your family, God bless America, and God bless South Fulton.
Following Ms. Parham, Carlos Lester, and Mr. Al Hudson. Ms. Parham.
My name is Beverly Parham. I live at 3435 Raganswood Drive, College Park, Georgia 30349. And as the city of the citizens of this city of South Fulton, we elected you all, and we're looking for inclusivity and transparency on all levels with regards to city government. First of all, optimizing our time together so that we leave these meetings well-informed and can intelligently discuss the process of building this city from ground up with others in our communities that are not in attendance, not leaving here feeling left out, experiencing taxation without representation. We have been attending these meetings since June and still have not received answers to the questions being asked during the public comment period. Is it too much to ask that these questions and answers be posted on the website? Finally, we're concerned about making budgeting decisions, our council making budgeting decisions that compensate heavily the people at the top while minimizing the work of those employees who are on the front line of serving this great city, including but not limited to our policemen, our firemen, and our co-enforcement officers. As a citizen of this city, we have fears, we have doubts, we have concerns, and we need our front line paid well and treated well. You work for us. Thank you so much.
My name is Carlos Lester, I live on Wallace Road, and I represent Omni Tech Institute. For twenty years, Omni Tech has been in this community. The last three years, we've been in Calis District, District Six, supporting this and partnering with Ms. Barbara McKee for Lift. We do a lot of community service, we do a lot of technical training, occupational training, and we wanna let our services be known to everyone here and to everyone in the room. Omni Tech is nationally accredited by COE, the Commission for the Council on Occupational Education. We're nationally certified by the U.S. Department of Education, we administer Title IV funds, and basically, we train people. We're also licensed by the state, certified by the VA. We were selected by Fort McPherson Top Secret Military Base, 22 schools to do their technical training. We've won many corporate and business contracts over the last nineteen years. The main thing I wanna stress here is that we hear a lot about crime in our community, but we know that many people in this room, many people on the panel here, work with our youth. Send your youth to Omni Tech. We have an eighty percent job placement ratio, we've been doing this for nineteen years, and we support and assisted, Ms. McKee is supporting Calis, getting him in office. And the other thing is that when we have new businesses come to this area, like BMW has come, we know that Fulton, the city of Fulton County, South Fulton, has input on who gets hired. Many times, a new corporation comes, and they bring their own employees from the outside. Well, we're doing job placement, we're helping people come off the street. A vast majority of, a lot of our students and graduates who come in have been a part of the penal system, they've got criminal backgrounds, or they've been vets, we've worked with a lot of vets, who don't have a lot of options. They come, they get training, they get certified, they end up with fifty, hundred thousand dollar a year jobs. Well, we want BMW and these other companies that come in to be required to hire some of our students, and not just bring their own employees here. So we wanna put that word out, and thank you for your time.
Following Mr. Al Hudson, Mr. Jermaine Bradley, and Ms. Juliet Rankin. Is Mr. Hudson here? No? Okay. So, Mr. Bradley? Following Mr. Bradley, Ms. Juliet Rankin, and then Ms. Glenda Collins.
Hello, how you doing, councilman? My name is Jermaine, Councilman of London. My name is Jermaine Bradley, and I represent Omni Tech as well as an admission rep, and I want to also second everything Mr. Lester said in asking you all to consider, you know, our youth, you know, a place to go, you know, for technical training, also job placement. If I'm not mistaken, Gaby Road is a part of South Fulton, if I'm not mistaken, maybe a block away. And just this past, probably just wanna share your experience, I saw about five o'clock, broad daylight at the Chevron gas station, three guys, armed robbery guy, bunch of, plenty of people around. And, you know, just as a witness to see a robbery in broad daylight, something like that, you know, what it tells me is our youth, obviously, they need money, they need things to do, and I can testify myself, before I actually came to Omni Tech, not knowing that I could get a certification in less than two months of being in the program, I didn't, you know, I'm one who really don't like school, but this is a particular school that actually focuses in on direct things that you can do, whether it be medical, whether it be music, film, digital media, or whether it be IT. It's something that, you know, we have found special, a lot of our kids in South Fulton who love music, who love movies, who love to be creative. It's an opportunity for them to do things that they love, where they may not have to necessarily do a lot of studying on what is science. They don't have to necessarily be mathematicians, they can actually focus in on things, and they get hands-on training. So I do wanna second that to if you can have people, or at least our youth, if you want to work with you, to come by, take a visit, to see what it is to school after all. Thank you for your time.
I would like to share with you information that I heard this morning on the radio WSB as I was driving into work, and I'm sure you guys may have heard it also, I've been hearing it for a couple of weeks, maybe two or three weeks. But when the news comes on, the traffic comes on the radio, and they have been referring to South Fulton as West Atlanta, West Hills, Westville, a lot of different names. And this morning, I heard them refer to South Fulton as West Haven, one of the names that was on the list of the top six names, and I just want to let you guys know that this is going on. And after they referred to the traffic coming out of West Haven, this was the traffic report. Directly after the traffic report, the news came on, and the person telling the news, she said that a hotel motel needed to be closed because it was crime-ridden, and after she said that, she said the person over the hotel or motel said that it was a haven for crime. So do you see the subliminal message? West Haven, a haven for crime. Please take the time to invest in a branding company, to put out a survey to the citizens of South Fulton to name our city. If you do not take control of naming your city, someone will take control of naming it for you and branding it for you. Thank you.
Following Ms. Glenda Collins, Ms. Barbara McKee, and Ms. Tamara Fortman-Jamison.
Good evening, councilman and mayor. I live at 3740 Monique Drive. Transparency is vital for the city, and it is important to the citizens in any setting, along with integrity and honesty with our budget and policies. The salary of the administrators to the council should be revisited, and if the salary exceeds any full-time employee, then those salaries should be reviewed. Also, if one of their positions is vacated by a person and authority, the new person hired should have the ability to hire their own employees and staff. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Barbara, and I live in Heritage Park, right off Old National. I just want to tell you that I live, work, and play in South Fulton. I've been working with Commissioner Mayor Edwards, also sat on the board with Ms. Willis, Khalid been to my house, and I have faith in the rest of the council members. I know you can lead our city with integrity and truth, so I appreciate that, along with a lot of hard work. As we've heard, there's a lot of work that needs to go on. I want us to come together and just be a good city. But I come tonight to tell you about me, Barbara. In 2000, we moved to Atlanta. I had the, I guess we can say ability, but I had met Ms. Butler, Helen Butler, at a meeting. Then I joined the, a club at Clark Atlanta. We need a minute thing too, and hear that little roller thing? For minutes, two minutes, right? The little thing you put up so we can see the time rolling?
Thirty-seven.
Anyway, I went through ANDP, and I got a certification from Clark Atlanta on how to rebound a community. So I'm well-educated in that. In 2005, I moved to Heritage Park. There I had an opportunity to meet Sheriff Davis, and I started working with Captain Toots. Heritage Park was terrible when we moved there, breaking in, just break-ins, break-ins. So I established A. I guess, what do you call it, Captain Toots?
Neighborhood watch.
Neighborhood watch. And the crime went down. So I know we can bring the crime down by neighborhood watches and people being nosy in your community, and all those things. Also, I started a business in 2006 called Lift. Yeah, about halfway through. That we established about, well, we do about two thousand clients a month. But what I'm here to tell you, I want, I wanna ask you tonight, is that in November, I will start doing some things, so I need your help. Councilman Khalid, I didn't have a chance to set up a meeting with you. Your website didn't work.
Following Mr. Johnson, Ms. Margaret Simpson, Mr. Charlie Bryant, and Mr. James.
I got you. Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Damon Jamison. I reside in Oakley Township in District Seven. Let me start by letting you guys know, I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys have been doing. I know it's not a small task. As a recent elected board member of our recently transitioned HOA, I understand that there's a lot of initiatives on your plate that you really have to focus on. One thing I wanna discuss tonight is, I've been to several different meetings, I've been to a few city council meetings, been to a couple sanitation meetings, a couple business meetings around the city, and I feel obligated to speak on some things I noticed at the last meeting on the 25th. Up until that point, I felt real comfortable with what's been going on in the city, and I got a sense of uneasiness at our last meeting. Seemed to be a little bit of disarray, a little bit of uncertainty on the panel, as well as a little bit of personal agendas going on. So what I would like to just remind everybody is that we're all a city in this together. I, we lost a neighbor in my neighborhood yesterday, shot in broad daylight in his front yard. All right? And the reason I bring that up is because one of the initiatives that's been on our plate from day one has been public safety. And I understand that there is a, there's a lot that goes into bringing a police force over, and it was really brought to our attention at the last meeting with the recruitment process behind a police chief and going through all of that to get that person on board, with naming the city, to make sure there's some kind of name on their cars, as well as on their sleeves. But I implore you all to keep that on the forefront, all right? These are the things that we elected you for, these are the things that we're looking for, we're looking to keep our community. These are the things that we're looking for, we're looking to keep our community safe. And I just ask that you keep that on the forefront as we go through all these initiatives that you remember, public safety is one of the biggest issues that we elected you for. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Simpson. I reside at six-twenty-nine Maltese Drive. I'm here to thank my councilwoman, Helen Zanobia Willis, because she's done a lot in our neighborhoods since she's been in office. I'm also here to address this amendment, the ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero one five. I think that this amendment is vicious in nature. I think it's a get back and we should not be going after people because we don't like them. I did not vote for my councilwoman and everybody didn't vote for y'all, for people to be going after people because they don't like them. It's vicious and it's malicious. I'm here because I voted for y'all and I'm gonna be the one that's gonna hold y'all feet to the fight. I'm gonna be the one that's gonna be up here every time y'all do something wrong. And I think that when you can't get your way, it's okay. But you don't take it out on somebody else. You know what I mean? The city council is the city council. They have no right to talk to any employees or anything like that. It should not, this is being mean spirited. And the whole back door of, oh, you vote for me and I'll do this, that's ridiculous. We voted for y'all, everybody should be on one accord. And that's just my thing. Like, it's annoying me and I don't, I don't usually come out, but this has made me come outside because it's just annoying to me. I feel that we voted for y'all, we have faith in y'all, we're trying to make this city better, there was crime going on, we need shops, we need businesses, we need housing, and y'all are worried about the wrong thing, the entire wrong thing. And I mean, maybe it's gonna take a whole bunch of citizens to come up here and challenge y'all every meeting, but what y'all doing is wrong and you know this amendment is wrong. And if y'all vote for it, I'm gonna be here and hold your feet to the fire and let you have it for doing, because it's ridiculous. We all voted for y'all. This is a family, everybody's already looking at us. We know why this amendment is because somebody can't get their way. Okay, well, ignore that. Everybody's not gonna always get their way. But what I'm asking you tonight is to vote for what's fair and what is right, not because you want to be in alliance with somebody else.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jeff Boone and I'm here to speak in support of the Election Day Holiday Bill. I think Councilwoman Khalid has shown great vision and leadership in the bill, especially around his idea of building a culture of political education on election days. As the councilman said, similar to our national celebration of MLK Day, it will be a day on and not a day off. Without public holidays on election days, a boss is given the power to disenfranchise a worker and infringe upon their right to vote by not giving them the time off to make it to the polls. Making Election Day a holiday isn't just a good idea, it's an absolute necessity for a society that considers itself to be democratic. I encourage this body to take the lead on showing our fellow citizens of Metro Atlanta, in the state and even in the country, that a voting holiday only serves to strengthen democracy and empower working families. Today, you can take the lead in our community, our state, and our country in that vision. I would implore you not to let this incredible opportunity slip by. Stand with working families, build a more robust democracy, and overturn the veto. Thank you. Thirty-five oh three, Temple Creek, Surville.
Jeremy Bryant, fifty-six oh five, Sable Bay Point. I came here firstly to give respect to the whole panel. I know you're not doing this for the money, I'm sure of that. And everybody appears should be able to leave this office and still not be attacked as what's been happening recently. I normally wouldn't address a rumor, but now a rumor starts on a Facebook page or somebody set up a website and tell a lie on one of the council members. And the council member is Rosie Jackson and I'm in this district, so you know, I take this personally. So I'm talking to you, but I'm talking about everybody in this room. That when you see some negative things coming out about South Fulton, approach that. Have them explain what they're talking about, see whether facts, what they did, their facts are checking. And if you see somebody talking about another council member, that means they're talking about each and every one of you because you're council members. And we have to, we have to accept what's coming out unless we come in and address it. Anybody has any complaints with the council, need to be talking to the council members, not going on a newspaper and spreading rumors like it's happened with Ms. Jackson, which is a lie. It's a lie that's going out. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna repeat it, but check your facts before you start talking about South Fulton is negative, something's wrong with it. And that's, that's what I want to address. I know the council members are not in a position to take that tone, but I am.
Amen.
The mayor, members of council.
My lord. Where we going, Braden? I'd like to acknowledge Representative Bruce, who's here, Representative Jackson, folks with the, with the, and the audience, and I'll raise your hand if you may not know you.
The mayor, the first item under new business on page two under resolution is a resolution to authorize a cooperation agreement between the City of South Fulton and the Airport West Community Improvement District, CID, that's Resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero thirty-six.
Mayor, this was a request that I had for the agenda based on a request from the Airport West Community Improvement District. As you may recall, this council has previously consented to the expansion of the Airport West Community Improvement District. This is just a follow-up to that. It would authorize the interim city manager and I to review a cooperation agreement, which is common for CIDs to do their work and then for the city to enter into that agreement, so long as it is substantively similar to those executed by other municipalities. It effectively just kind of sets the rules of the road, which is largely set by state law anyway.
Go ahead, Braden.
Does this cooperative agreement take any parcels out of the tax base for the City of South Fulton?
No, the CID taxes would be in addition to what would be on the City of South Fulton. The difference with the CID ones are that those have to be spent in the Community Improvement District, but it does not impair South Fulton's tax laws.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution twenty seventeen dash zero three six between the City of South Fulton and the Airport West Community Improvement District. Second.
Properly moved, the second in discussion. Although the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I think that's unanimous, that passes.
Mr. Burke? Next item is a resolution adopting a fee schedule for services.
Make a motion. Okay, I make a motion to adopt a fee schedule for services, Resolution twenty seventeen dash zero three seven.
No, I got, she's got the motion, so I'm in first second. Came out of town. Properly moved, the second in discussion?
I looked at the schedule and I wondered where it came from and when and how. How was it about?
I would like our CFO to address it. It was my understanding that these, this fee structure was in place previously under the Special Services District. Can you confirm that?
Yes, so before you, is the fee schedule for business licenses as well as for planning, zoning, and building. All these schedules that you have, they are the ones that have been adopted by Fulton County. And we are bringing them to you to adopt because we have started correcting fees, so we don't want to correct fees without your input into it. If you see a fee, you want us to make changes down the line, we'll do that. But this is what Fulton County adopted while we were working as a service district.
My first question, was there any adjustments in the fees for this fee schedule since we're now incorporated as a city? That's my first question.
They have not made any adjustments. The request from the council was bring us the schedule that you have, give us also other comparable cities what they are charging, so that we can see if we plan to make changes, let's do that. So I have two representatives for business, business license to answer some questions that you may have also from planning, planning schedule, if there will be other questions that you may have on the fee schedule for planning, zoning, and building, they will be available to answer that.
One of the things that I noticed is that for the new business license fee, it is a little higher than John Creek's and Sandy Springs, and that's who we're often compared to. Can you explain the change in that?
Ms. Tara will be in a position to give us explanation on business licenses, and then we'll have Mr. Smith to give the explanation and the answer questions on the planning, zoning, and building.
Hello, I didn't get your question.
So when I looked at the plan that was proposed to us, there is a change in the business license fee for the City of South Fulton. It comes across as higher than what we'd be compared to in John's Creek and Sandy Springs. And I just wanted some explanation as to why that is.
It is due to the increase that was approved by Fulton County back in two thousand and eleven. We're originally one thirty-eight and it's comparable to the other North Fulton cities. And in that year, we increased to one fifty-eight.
And lastly, with this new fee schedule for the fifteen hundred businesses, how are we planning to communicate the change in the fees? How are we gonna communicate with them?
Actually, what we are going to do right now, fifteen hundred, those ones, is a combination of City of South Fulton plus FID. So what we are going to do is to separate them, then we'll see exactly what is in the City of South Fulton, then we'll have your input before we make changes. But now that fifteen hundred is a combination of the city as well as FID.
Okay, that's on the questions.
Without adopting a fee schedule, this will halt our process or business owners' the ability to come in get business licenses to operate. Is that correct?
It's not. Actually, we have already started receiving. So we'll be receiving until the changes, people will be paying on this schedule. So we are continuing on the schedule that we've got from Fulton County, until you decide that you want changes to this one, but there will be no changes.
Okay.
Mayor, go ahead.
One of the things I previously asked the staff to look at was relative to practitioners, that there are two categories, looking at social workers compared to doctors and lawyers. I know currently that it's a flat fee of four hundred dollars. And when I look at some of those fees compared to other municipalities, one I wanted to weigh in particular, I know a small business owner, she asked me regarding, she has a salon, actually a spa, where they do massages and the like, and the fee is four hundred. When you look at even John's Creek, even in the information you provided, it's like two fifty. So some of those areas, just to make sure that, you know, we're competitive, that's significantly higher. I would like you to look at and bring back a recommendation that's more aligned with what you would see with other cities. We don't, we want to be an environment that's friendly to businesses.
Mr. Burke, you have your second question. Your question is remaining?
I wanted to know whether or not you're still using the, you're still outsourcing a part of the business license department, or is everything handled in-house now?
As of now, we are still, because we are still under Fulton County, until next Monday, that's when it will be to us. Now they will sit down with the planning assess what we need to do. Do we have enough manpower to do in-house and or else do we outsource? And even if we are going to outsource, we still consider your recommendations of who to, where to look for contract services.
Thank you.
I wanted to update you on that professional flat rate fee for small businesses like salons. Their tax fee is based on their gross receipts. For example, if their gross receipts are twenty thousand or less, they pay the minimum tax fee of one fifty-eight, the four hundred dollar professional fee would not apply.
Any further discussion? Although the favor, aye?
Aye.
So two, same?
Same.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next resolution is a resolution to approve workers' compensation insurance coverage through Georgia Municipal Association, that's Resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero three eight.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, this item is before you. As you are aware, we've started to move over employees and it is important for us to have workers' comp coverage for our employees. We approached private companies. Unfortunately, their timetable did not fit our timetable. We did approach the Georgia Municipal Association that also offers workers' compensation and they could provide us with the kind of coverage that we need. If in the event we decide to go another direction, then we could always at some point terminate our arrangement with the Georgia Municipal Association. But this item that is before you is to approve the agreement for workers' compensation insurance to be provided through the Georgia Municipal Association.
Okay, councilwoman.
City manager, currently, how many employees do we have on the road? Are those based on recent transitions from the council?
It's either thirty-two or thirty-five, fifty-two. Forty? Forty-two. And then we'll bring over business licenses on Monday.
Okay, I can just, what is with that?
Got to take us to forty-five.
So we have forty-one employees as of Monday. So currently, our employees are not covered?
Correct.
So if they get hurt, we are at risk of...
Yes, you're correct.
I would like to make a motion to approve workers' compensation insurance coverage through the Georgia Municipal Association, Resolution twenty seventeen dash zero three eight.
I second.
Properly moved, the second in the discussion.
All?
All discussion.
Councilman, go ahead.
In the next two months, do you have a projection of those numbers after we bring over other departments?
That will be all through the remainder of this fiscal year.
This fiscal?
Yes, and then in October, we do parks.
Josh, go ahead.
I would like to ask the finance CFO to answer that question. And I do not believe there are any exclusions, but I want to make sure by asking him that question.
That amount is for the fiscal year, for the whole year, for twelve months. The next time we'll be bringing to you again general liabilities against for the whole month. But the number changes as we have got some employees coming. That amount is for the employees that are there now, but as we bring some more employees, we'll be adjusting. But as we bring some more employees, we'll be adjusting. As we bring more employees, we will be adjusting. We'll adjust more when the police and fire comes in because there's more liability in there. So actually, our premiums will go much, much higher by January.
But the question was, are there any exclusions in this coverage?
There is nothing. It's not, there's not inclusive in the exclusions.
Councilwoman Garrett?
So the document that I have in front of me that's dated for August the 8th from findings. The number that's here for budget, what exactly is that number? Because we got commas and no decimals. So can somebody tell me what this number actually is?
If you don't mind, I'll address that. The proposal that we received from Georgia Municipal Association included all of the current existing employees through parks, which we will be the next group that's coming over, which is in October. But it will incrementally increase as we bring additional employees over.
So this amount would...
It includes parks.
No. You're not answering my question.
It's 44,000.
Is it 44,000?
Yes, it is.
Or is it 448?
It's 44,000 now. It will increase with all of the numbers. We gave them projections all the way through the fire department coming over into next year. The number that you have there is what it will incrementally increase to with all of the employees at the end of next year.
There's no decimal.
Right. And for the record, for the record, it is 44,000 and 14 dollars.
Exactly.
Eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
Okay. It will incrementally increase though as we bring over employees over.
Councilwoman Jackson, I think I saw you.
No, I don't know.
Any other discussion? Having that, although, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those that, forgive me, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is one of the resolutions that was discussed in the work session beforehand, that there is a substitute in front of you. It's also labeled Resolution 2017-38. It encompasses, it has the same substance and effect of the one that is in your packet. It just formalizes a little bit of the language in terms of the GMA Workers' Compensation Self Insurance Fund, et cetera. But it is, the presentation that you have been given on what the resolution does is consistent with the amended one. I would, I would request that you amend or adopt as an amended ordinance the revised one that is before you. Just I think it's, it's in better form.
Can you read the amendment?
The amendment does, there's a, it changes the title from a resolution approving workers' compensation insurance coverage through Georgia Municipal Association GMA to a resolution authorizing the city to apply to obtain workers' compensation insurance coverage through the Georgia Municipal Association. There are some additional citations within the whereas clauses. For example, citing to Georgia Code 34-9-1, which is the requirement under state law that the city provide workers' compensation coverage. And 34-9-154 citing that the city may do so through a membership with a group, group self insurance fund. It then identifies the GMA Workers' Compensation Self Insurance Fund as such a fund. And then in terms of the active provisions in the resolution themselves, it makes clear that we are executing an application to participate and upon approval of the application, at that point, we will abide by the rules of the self insurance fund. And that coverage will be as necessary for the city and its purposes. So again, is it what I know the intent of the ordinance in front of you does, it just puts it in a bit more formal language.
Yes, sir.
Was there a motion?
Uh-uh. I made the motion. Yeah, I made the motion.
Someone has to include the amendment. Mayor, you do have a motion to steal all. Yes, motion to accept, make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amended resolution for 2017-038.
Second.
Who is making the motion?
I made the motion to accept. What is the amendment to the motion?
I believe the amendment is to pass the revised one as a substitute resolution. So that you would be enacting the revised one, not the one that is currently on the schedule.
Okay, if it properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Although the favor, aye? That is unanimous, I think, and that passes.
The next item is a ordinance for first reading adoption of personnel ordinance and amendment to existing ordinance number 2017-038. This ordinance for first reading is under item number 2017-015.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this ordinance has really two effects. One, it amends in really just a codification, the existing ordinance that the city has passed and makes room for Chapter 6, which is the section on municipal employees. This adopts, and I've confirmed with the Human Resources Department, that this language adopts what the city has already adopted effectively or passed at a previous meeting through resolution. This adopts it through an ordinance itself. And while there's a lot of text in here, most of it is just making a place for this in the code itself. The substance is Section 4, which is creating Chapter 6. Again, it's creating the at-will status with grievance, which is what the city has already adopted through resolution, and adopting the pay scale that was already adopted by resolution by the city. There is no vote today.
Yeah, this is the first reading, so there is no vote tonight. My understanding you just said. But I would like to request for our person, our HR department to, by the next regular council meeting, have some SOE procedures explaining what the grievance process is. You explained it, but I need to, I want to know what the non-adverse and adverse actions are. I want to also, I want to also, I want a detailed explanation of how the grievance process proceeds. It was mentioned that we would have a peer review panel. I need to get a understanding of how that panel is going to be comprised, who oversees that panel. And I also want to know the option of not having a peer review panel, having a third party, a third party panel, such as what the county currently has in place.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm going to be all out of order, but I need to ask a question as it relates to the at-will. I'm questioning the lower, I don't know where the, the pay scale. I'm looking at merit for the lower pay scale and for the, the higher at-will. I was always a merit carry, so I'm trying to figure something out.
I'm sorry, your question is...
I'm trying to, it's coming away from this. This is what we voted on, that what was voted on that passed last time. But I'm looking at, I'm wanting to see something with merit. For down, I work for the state. Merit covered me.
Okay.
The higher, I'm looking at will. And I need a pay scale or something going with that. And I'm probably totally out of order. But this is where I am.
You understand what you want.
What's the request?
No, she has... My request, I want to see something.
She wants something in the future from what she just said.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can I see that, wait. The next, because this is the first reading for this.
Yes.
So can I have something at the regular council meeting showing the difference with the merit for the lower pay? You got it?
Yep.
And then the at-will for the higher? Is that something I can see? Thank you.
Yes.
So, a point of clarity, council. Are we currently under a pure at-will? Or are we currently under what is in this ordinance? Because we voted last week to be under it. I'm confused.
It's the latter. Modified at-will with grievance.
So we voted on something that we did not have ordinance or resolution for? And now we're retroactively printing out an ordinance or resolution for something that we voted on last week that we didn't have one for?
You voted to approve the at-will with grievance?
Right.
And now you are codifying that decision in an ordinance.
Okay. So, so my, my first question is, it has helped me out because it was my understanding, it was just explained to us that we could not make motions on things that we did not have a resolution or ordinance for.
The, I'm not quite sure how to answer that while respecting the confidentiality of the elected session.
Okay. And my next question is, so now that we have adopted this at-will plus grievance policy, can we change it by amending this ordinance at the next regular session?
This ordinance can be changed and the ordinance would override the resolution that we have passed.
All right. We'll get that out to you.
Okay, let me, let me, I think Councilman Baker has to do it right there. Councilman Willis, may I put here?
So it's my understanding, the reason we voted on the last council meeting to bring employees over on a hybrid status, and we voted on pay compensation, because if we did not bring them over on a hybrid status, they would have been at-will and they would not have had any rights. So what I ask for is the HR department now go back with what that looks like and what that grievance process is and what adverse actions are, what are non-adverse actions. And we also, you're also going to bring information back on the merit status. Do I understand that correctly? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Mayor?
All right, the next item for first reading as well is adoption of amendment, I'm sorry, there are two amendments to this personnel ordinance that we have on the floor. Also being introduced today under, under the personnel ordinances are two amendments. One by Councilmember Gilliard and the other by Councilmember Jackson. The first amendment to ordinance number 2017-015 sponsored by Councilmember Gilliard seeks to make changes in two areas, personnel handbook, workforce plan, so I guess, and hiring. So I would defer to Councilmember Gilliard or to legal counsel.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Councilwoman Gilliard, if I get this wrong, I know you'll correct me, so forgive me. I'll apologize in advance if I did. There are three amendments to this. It actually does not, it's an amendment to the resolution that we just discussed, but it does not change any of the underlying text of that amendment. It just adds to it. The first would be dealing with a personnel handbook that the Human Resources Department is required to prepare and submit to the city manager a personnel handbook. That handbook has to be ratified by resolution of the city council in order for it to be effective. And that any material changes in the personnel handbook also have to be ratified by the city council in the form of a resolution. That's Section 6,003. Section 1-6,004 is a workforce plan. And that this deals with addressing the proposed annual budget. And at the time that that is proposed, the city manager has to describe the duties of each of the city employees in a separate communication to the council. As you will often see what that ends up being is they are by position. So in other words, clerical assistant two, there may be five different clerical assistant twos. And that that could be within the description. They will be grouped together in that way. That the council would approve of those job descriptions as well. Next is in hiring, it deals with the process for hiring. Says that any city employee has to be interviewed by at least two city employees in the same industry as the person coming. And that one of the interviewers has to be from what the city's HR department. If the city manager is considering hiring a department head, which is, you know, obviously distinct from an employee, the city manager has to confirm that the proposed salary is consistent with the pay scale which you have approved by resolution and that the main resolution has you approving already. And that prior to extending an offer of employment to any person, the city manager must confirm that the salary is consistent with that pay scale and how, I'm sorry, going back to the first one, how that hire would impact the budget. So if, going back to subsection B, if the hire is within both the budget as established by the pay scale and adopted by the city council, then it would just be confirmation from the city manager to that effect. It's effectively a check the box, make sure that things are followed in the process, if that, if that makes sense.
I just want the public to know that I wrote that ordinance, sent it to the, to our attorney, who put it in certain language, but I want to let you know why I wrote it. So I'm going to read from the charter. The charter says, "The city council shall adopt rules and regulations consistent with this charter concerning, one, the method of employee selection and probationary periods of employment; two, the administration of position classification and pay plan, methods of promotion and application of service ratings thereto, and transfer of employees within the classification system; three, hours of work, vacation, sick leave and other means of absences, layoffs, et cetera, dismissal hearings and the process that may require, and other personnel notices that may be necessary." So if you heard very clearly, not all of that is in the ordinance that was written. What was in there was to make sure that we are in the paid, paid plan when a person is hired, that it is within the budget and they were following the charter. That's why it was written. I thought that it was important for all of you to know. That's the reason why it was written. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney. The charter is the, we go, when we look at anything, the charter takes precedent over everything else, right?
Everything except all.
Except state law, so, yes. So just, just a question. If the charter enunciates what I just heard, why do we need a resolution?
I think the legal answer, Mr. Mayor, is that...
I know you're going to give me a legal answer.
The, the ordinance does not conflict with the charter. The question of why is probably more of a policy question that I would defer to the city council.
Well, and the reason why I say that, when the policy, if, if the charter takes precedent, I mean, we could write everything in the charter and put it in an ordinance or resolution, you know, just, you know, to say this is what you've got to do when we already said it. That's all, I'm not saying it ain't good, Ms. Gilliard. I'm not saying it's not good. I'm just saying that it, sometimes it gets a little redundant when we do things like that. And Councilwoman Jackson?
I think oftentimes, things are questioned. So if we clarify what we mean and have it in black and white upfront, then there is no question. There is no, we don't have to think that. It's there.
And I, and I see, I hear that. But so many things could be in question.
Still written.
You know, that we can, we can spend our time at the attorney's office clarifying what's already written in the charter. That's just my, that's just the way I feel about it. Councilwoman Willis?
I have a question I would like for our HR team to weigh in. Because I have a concern about requiring an HR personnel number to participate in every interview. We have only two persons in HR and they are overwhelmed, I know, with transitioning employees over, having to do the employee training. And so can you speak to, I just, I'm concerned about that requirement. And also, I have a question before you explain that. I've heard the charter, the city manager hires division heads, and then the division heads are responsible for hiring the staff. And so, wouldn't it be incumbent upon the division heads to come up with their interview process? I guess, I'm, I mean, the charter gives us a guideline, and if we need clarification, that's what our city attorney is for, but wouldn't it be, well, maybe that's a HR question. Wouldn't it be the division heads responsible for hiring their staff and coming up with interview panels? Isn't that what they're paid to do?
I'd like to respond, and please keep in mind that my priority is to do what's best for the city, and as always, to do most importantly, what's best for the employee. When it comes to the interview process, the HR role and function is to ensure that there is a fair and equitable process for searching for, selecting, and making a decision on placement of new hires. So, our role has been to put a process in place that can be evaluated for, on its merit, for being fair and equitable, and making certain that every candidate is treated consistently throughout that interview process, which is what we've done. We've created a scoring process, we've created a questionnaire that departmentally, the department heads will determine the key knowledge skills and abilities that are required, the key questionings that will be required during that interview process, and we facilitate the interview. We don't put, we're not subject matter experts in every department's function. Therefore, we don't purport ourselves to be subject matter experts. We are facilitators of the process to make certain that the process is fair, that the minimum skills and requirements that are posted on our website are met when we put candidates before you, and that those candidates are screened consistently. So, that is our role, and that is our responsibility. In order, the final piece of your question was, can we sit in on all interviews? We have departments throughout the city that consist of administration, code enforcement, planning, parks and recreation, fire and police. There's no possible conceivable way that the two of us can sit in on every interview in every department, nor can we be subject matter experts on every interview in every department. We can, however, facilitate the process, do the pre-screening that's necessary to make sure that the knowledge skills and responsibilities that we're looking for are met before the interview process, and we can support as necessary on those key hires where our expertise is necessary.
Okay, and so can you speak to how you all, how the interview panel, is that, is the onus of that, is that supposed to be on the director or the division head of a department?
Again, what we've done is facilitated the process to make sure that it is fair and consistent, and that those panelists participating have the background, the knowledge, and abilities to evaluate the candidates.
Let me, let me ask the county attorney, there any evidence that anything we're saying nothing to violate?
I'm not aware of any violation of it.
Are you, are you then, are you, are you doing what you're doing based on what the charter is?
I am doing absolutely what has been asked of me based on the charter and based on sound HR practice.
I don't want to be the dead horse, I really don't. But, we spent a lot of time writing resolutions. We might want to write a resolution to get a name for this city. We might want to write a resolution to get the seal for this city. I mean, if I'm not violating anything, I don't understand, we all must be guided by the charter. Must be guided by the charter. So, I, I thought maybe the impetus for this was that someone did something that's against the charter, and then we're trying to correct it. I mean, that's kind of where it used to be. How many, how many resolutions you got in your office to be done?
Pending or...
Pending.
Seventeen pending.
I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned, I'm not saying this is bad, I'm just concerned about sometimes we get far away from our priorities. You know, and I think we have to build this city from the ground up and not from the top down. And so, you know, little things like a name, and a young lady came to the microphone, you were truly right. Things like a name may seem small, but it's, in, in retrospect, and looking at everything, it is big. It is really, really big. So, I'm not trying to, I mean, guess what you've got to do, but I think that sometimes we, we lose our perspective, and we start dealing in other, in things that we don't really have a problem with, alright? Except that we want to make sure that everybody across the T's and dot their I's, so, that's kind of my take on it. I'm not trying to be against anybody or anything, but there are certain things we need right now, and we talked about some of those things back there, and we got to resolve those problems. I mean, some people may say seventeen resolutions ain't nothing, you know, they may say it's nothing, but that's the ones that pend. Not the ones that, not the ones that we already voted on. So, that's just my take on it, and I'll think, Ms. Gilliard, next, then, Ms. Khalid.
So, I know seventeen resolutions sounds like a lot, and I know that people in the audience, I hear the brum of the people in the audience. I want to say that the charter of our country was the United States Constitution. It was written 230 years ago, and every year, 230 years later, the Congress presents hundreds of bills to refine outlines of the charter. This is what government does, write resolutions, we make ordinances to refine what is unclear in the charter. And the charter itself speaks to that. In the first chapter, it says, "If this charter makes no provisions, such shall be carried into execution as provided by ordinance, or as provided by pertinent laws of the state of Georgia." So, our, our, our job as the city council is to write ordinances and resolutions that further define what is outlined in the charter. So, so no one here is not doing their job.
And I want to follow up with the fact that the charter tells us what to do. The resolutions and the ordinances tell us how to do it. It does not tell us how to do it. In some instances, for instance, it says, "If you want to talk to a department head, you have to go through the city manager." That's specific. But, I spent a lot of time trying to write it in such a way that it wouldn't be overbearing, but that it would give the council the ability to make policy, because that's what we do, and to make it as friendly as possible, and to give it to the attorney to say, "Is this right? If it's wrong, let me know, and I'll just walk away." And he took it, and he did what he was supposed to do with it legally. So, I'm comfortable that we're not trying to take over HR's job or the city manager's job. We're just trying to function as council people based on this charter, which we have discussed. And I know Representative Brooks probably doesn't want to hear this. Is there any way we can make this charter more specific, so we don't get into these kinds of things? But no, because that's not what a charter really is. So, I just want everyone to understand that, yes, we've got a lot of things to do, a lot. In addition to the fact that when those other departments come over, those people are already hired. So, if they need additional people, they're going to be able to help HR, because they've been hiring people for a long time. So, you're going to really be able to get help. And I think at this point, we've gotten almost to the end, especially as it relates to the budget, of trying to put the infrastructure together. So, that's really what we're trying to do. And we just want to make sure that we're following the charter, and that we're helping in any way.
Councilwoman Willis?
Naema, I would like to make a friendly amendment to your ordinance. Is there any way that we could, for the interview panel, I think it's a good ordinance, thank you for doing this. But for the interview panel, can we alleviate requiring the HR personnel to be on the panel? We only have two staff members, and she just gave a thorough explanation on why, what their purpose is for HR, and that is basically to screen, ensure an equitable process is being followed. Make sure we have proper scoring sheets, and I just, I'm concerned about requiring, with all of the departments that we have to transition over, I, I'm concerned about requiring somebody from HR to sit on every interview panel.
I'm kind, I kind of have mixed emotions, and let me tell you why. Because I read best practices, and best practices says, you know, the department heads, the people in the department should be in the interview process, and somebody in HR should do that. But I do know that that's not necessarily in every case, and I do know that they have a lot of work. So, what happens then? I guess we can always amend a resolution, you know, later, if I, so I think I can accept that friendly amendment, and then, in the future, if we find out it needs to be changed, we can always change it.
Counsel, did you get that friendly emotion being accepted?
Thank you.
Okay, let's go with Councilwoman Baker, then Mayor Pooten.
So, the amendment has been accepted?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to know, and I know you gave a presentation on, last week, what, what's the number of HR personnel coming, coming in that's budgeted for our 2018?
We have, for 2018, five, but we're proposing that at least two additional for a total of four to come on staff. So, again, four people.
And that's within how many months?
If, if the budget is approved, it could be as early as the first month of the, the budget year.
Right, so then it won't be just you and another person available to do that work, correct?
There will be four, two, one will be for safety and security, and safety and health, occupational health. Therefore, that person would not be included in any interview process. The other would be a generalist, so there would be three of us available to participate and facilitate an interview.
I know within the respective departments, they have somebody who handles the HR function in the county. Are they considered extensions of the HR department in your mind? Because that could potentially have addressed the concern about serving on panels.
So, fire and police have their own recruiting and staffing process, and yes, that will support being able to adhere to their requirements for hiring. Again, my concern is, we have part-time personnel in parks that have to be interviewed. Do you expect an HR professional to sit in on the interview panel for part-time personnel in parks? We can, I mean, when we say all, it includes all, and I, I need to be clear on what the expectation is, and if that's the expectation, I always ask that you support the staff in the HR department to allow us to do that.
Other questions? So, Parks and Rec does not have somebody who handles their HR function?
They have an admin, administrative manager that supports in the interview process, but they don't have an HR person.
Good evening, council, and mayor. So, Fulton County Government has a personnel department, which has 18 HR consultants. And those consultants are each assigned to different departments within the county. So, any department can call on this central personnel, personnel department to request assistance with recruitment, setting up interviews, and things like that. So, they have 18 consultants that, that are available to come and sit on their interview panels to facilitate the interviews.
Thank you, Senator Claire.
You're welcome.
So, I make the motion that we accept 2017-015, the amendment, with the friendly, friendly amendment.
Probably move it second.
Mr. Mayor, may I, now, this, this is an ordinance for first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. I could change it.
So, there is one amendment requested, I'm sure the attorney will go back and make the amendment, and then you'll get your new version.
Ms. Clerk, before you go further, I also like to recognize Mr. Joe Carr of the City of College Park. Councilwoman Joe Carr. Councilwoman Joe Carr.
Clerk, you also have an amendment submitted by Councilmember Jackson to this personnel ordinance, and this is regarding a limitation on employment of certain employees. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Jackson and the council to provide an explanation.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is another one that we received, worked with the councilwoman on, and sent to HR for review. It has been reviewed. What this does is it, it also amends the personnel provision, although, and, and it says that for three types of employees, those who work in the office of mayor, those who are aides to city council members, and those who are assistants to appointed officials. Appointed officials are city manager, clerk, the city attorney, treasurer, that those persons will be employed only so long as the person they're working under retains their position, either elected or appointed. The last sentence makes sure that it does not change any of the at-will status of any employee, because we didn't want it to be perceived that if some are given a limited term, that that necessarily meant that others by implication had a longer term. So, that, that's why you see that last sentence in that provision, that it would still be the at-will status. And then the general ordinance, the one that started the conversation, that this would be an amendment two, makes very clear that it's an at-will plus grievance model. There would be no vote on this as well.
Yes, I'm going to, I'm sorry, Nina, being rude, and I want the public to hear this. Being rude, the city manager, I requested to speak with our HR director, because I was confused on why this ordinance is being proposed. And I need her to explain, by adopting the hybrid status, basically, it gives elected officials, also nominated personnel, the ability, once they are elected, to do three things. They have three options. They can either keep the staff from the previous administration that was hired as an assistant, or they can direct HR to help find that individual employment within the city, or they can decide to not move forward with that employee. Did I understand that correctly? Could you please explain what you explained to me today?
Sure. The way the amendment to the ordinance is written is that it's a requirement that that administrative or support person be released from their duties at the time that the administration changes. The at-will employment process that we put in place gives the newly elected official or newly appointed person the opportunity to evaluate that, that employee and say, "Hey, I like this person, I'd like to keep their services." Or, you know what, I've got someone in mind that I want to appoint to this position, so I'm going to make a recommendation that you reassign to another area, or to release them from their assignment. It protects the employees, but it also gives the council, elected official, the city manager, an opportunity to decide whether to retain the services of that employee or to reassign or release them to another area. But, the way that it's written, it's a requirement that that employee is terminated.
Okay, Josh, what?
And so, I, I, my concern is, this ordinance is not a fair process. The way that we have things, what we have adopted is a fair and equitable process, and it's fair to employees, and we want to be a welcoming city. And if a person feels like they're going to be hired and they're working for an elected official or someone who's been appointed to a position, if that person leaves or does something wrong, they are automatically terminated. That's going to, that's not going to send a message, that's not going to encourage people to want to work for us. That's my concern. So, I, I just hope that we consider leaving things the way that we are, because it's fair.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Uh, Josh, if you could include, but I will still maintain this... Josh, if you could include, but I will still maintain this is a first reading. We don't, you know, but the bottom line is, I would like to see what I was stating in the beginning, the different offices of the elected officials and the appointees. I did not include, we don't appoint the CFO.
Again, I'm thinking for policy, I'm not.
Did you go with that?
No, I didn't. Okay. Well, I was.
I was asking Josh.
Yes.
I was directing.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Yes. The appointed officials would be the city manager, clerk, the attorney and treasurer.
And the treasurer?
And the treasurer. Which may be different, I'm sorry, from a CFO, but the treasurer is a distinct appointed position.
Okay. So we don't.
You have appointed a treasurer who's also currently serving as your CFO.
But anyway, if we can.
Councilwoman Willis.
So what this amendment does is basically require employees who are working for any person that's in a appointed position or an official to automatically be terminated if that person.
That is not what I just said.
She asked for.
This is what HR just explained, and this is what our attorney is. Can you please explain what this amendment does, Josh, and also HR?
I didn't know if it was to me or to HR.
What Nina just explained is the way that we have things now would give the elected official or person to the appointed position three options. Can you explain those options to the public?
If you recall last week, I talked about how our government system of employment kind of grew. There was a system called the spoil system where with every election, you clean house and you get rid of everyone in the administrative offices. What we've put in place prevents us from doing that. It says that we're putting an administration in place, we're putting employees in place to run the city without them being subject to election cycles. Because we have to maintain the institutional knowledge and the institutional processes in order to continue to maintain the city operations. What we have with an at-will system, a hybrid of the merit system that includes all employees is the opportunity for any elected official to come in and say, I want to keep the administrative staff of the prior mayor or the prior city council member or the prior appointed personnel, or I want to recommend a reassignment of that person or a release of that person. So no city manager, no mayor, no council member will be forced to retain the services of an administrator that you don't want to keep. But it also gives you the right to keep that person if they are doing a good job and you feel that they are trustworthy and capable of doing the work that they've been doing under your tutelage or your management. So it gives you both options.
Now, explain what this amendment will do to what we currently have in place, please.
I just, I have to read it.
She goes ahead.
I have to read it in order to help you to understand what I understood. Any municipal employee who is employed by the office of mayor serves as an aide to a city council member or as an assistant to an appointed official shall, which is definitive, be employed only so long as the elected or appointed person to whom they directly report to is elected or appointed to the city government. Nothing in this paragraph shall be deemed to change the at-will status of an employee, including those identified in this ordinance. So the phrase "shall" says that they shall be released from their duties. And that concerns me as someone who's put in place to protect the city and to first and foremost, protect the employees. If they are doing a good job, you can say, they're doing a good job. I want to retain their services.
Okay, Josh, I asked you to write the order. So clearly, you wrote it, and I still, I'm standing. Because I've had several emails and, not emails, you know, this Facebook mess. And what they actually did was made me stand even stronger. So I'm standing on what I asked you to write.
Let me say something. I can't stand on Facebook, my God.
Oh, they do. I'm blessed to.
Don't stand on it.
No, I said I'm standing on this.
Let me say this. Just give me a scenario. Rest in peace, Joan Garner.
She died.
What would happen if she was under this amendment?
Her entire staff would be released.
And they do it anyway.
Ain't, no, that's not true. I've been with Fulton County fourteen years. It ain't true. Usually, it's even an unwritten deal in Fulton County where the city manager or another commissioner who owns it, they usually find jobs for the people who are left behind. And some of them even take, for example, Rob Pitch Girl went to Lee Mars. So I don't, I'm not feeling the equity, the fairness. You know, especially when somebody dies, they didn't get elected, unelected, they die. And you got to keep this house from breathing if you're going to have a job. I'm not grasping this concept. I think that in Fulton County, like anybody else, we just had an unwritten policy that we, that's what we did. And we took care of our employees. Some maybe not, didn't deserve to be part of, some of them may have been, nobody wanted. But that was clear policy. I had four people working for me before I left. All four of them went to Fulton County. Everyone of them got a job at Fulton. So this is what I'm not understanding. I don't like that dead part either, man, because I think that's unfair. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to note, this is just our first reading.
I understand. We're just making conversation. Yeah. Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the next coordinates for first reading is adoption of amendments to ordinance number 2017-012 regarding Board of Code Enforcement pertaining to renaming the board and relating to compensation. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Cleve.
I just want to make a motion that we adopt a resolution renaming the board of first reading. Okay. So I don't need to make a, I'm sorry. So can I just explain? What I was, yeah, this just changes the name from the Board of Code Enforcement to the Board of Building Code Enforcement. This came up after our last meeting where we realized that most of the people that we had nominated to this committee mayor may not have had any experience or background in actually building, and in the building code. So just so that it's clear for all future appointments and people who might interact with this board, that they just deal with the building.
Councilwoman Willis.
Mr. Wayne Wright is here, and through the city manager, I asked to speak with our code enforcement officer. And I would like for him to provide some clarification on this, what the code enforcement officers are, because it's not specific to building. And so can you please explain?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, mayor and members of council. In regards to the renaming of the Board of Code Enforcement, Councilman Cleve, the Board of Code Enforcement is dedicated to hearing cases only pertaining to code enforcement zoning related issues. In terms of building code, those are professional codes such as electrical, plumbing, HVAC. So any violators of those codes are considered technical violations. And any violators of those codes are going to go before a magistrate court. The Board of Code Enforcement is designed to handle technical cases pertaining to trash and debris, outside storage, junk vehicles and things of that nature, which are simple ordinance violations. Anything that's technical in nature, we tend to send those to an available magistrate court, sort of a judiciary rule on those issues. And that way, you can subpoena expert witnesses to come in, like the trade inspectors, HVAC and people of that nature.
So I guess my question to the council is, is what we have written for the Board of Code Enforcement, does it reflect what Mr. Wayne Wright just said?
No. What you have adopted in prior meetings in section three dash four thousand and one, subparagraph F, describes the jurisdiction, the existing languages. The enforcement board shall have jurisdiction to decide matters and alleged violations of the city building code, which you also adopted. So this is a limited board in terms of jurisdiction. If it is the will of council to make it a, make either this board more expansive or to make it also have the building code, you could certainly do that. Now that this is a first reader, it would be an amendment to this ordinance.
So just to be clear, we have a problem. What Mr. Wayne Wright, who heads code enforcement, thinks this board does is not what we wrote, what this board does. So we need to either fix what we wrote or fix the name.
Right. The term code takes on a number of different connotations. You have building code, you have fire code, you have code enforcement dealing with zoning. Since inception of this board that was created by Fulton County Board Commissioners, it was only relegated to code enforcement dealing with zoning related issues. We've never had a case come before the board dealing with a subject matter pertaining to HVAC, what we call professional codes. But certainly be up to council and under the direction of legal council, if you want to amend that to do so. Just keep in mind that your appointees, your acquaintances board are not qualified or necessarily certified in nature to hit technical cases that will come before the board pertaining to technical codes. That's why we tend to send those to an available magistrate court. So that way, under the guidelines, under leadership of a judge, you can subpoena expert certification, certified individuals to come in and testify on the case.
So we'll figure out which one we're going to fix. Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Clerk?
And just to make sure, Councilmember Cleve, did you cover both aspects of the amendments or just what? Or you can take your vote between now and next.
We just talked about the first aspect, but we probably, that is the bigger issue. You need to fix what this board is going to do before we figure out how they get paid. The second part of the amendment, just make sure that people don't get paid unless they show up to them.
Continuing on page three, under unfinished business, I am responsible by Mayor Potem Rowell, a resolution regarding standards for issuing proclamations and letters of commendation.
This particular resolution seeks to provide some guidelines for how the city will respond to letters of welcome, congratulations, and various requests that could come to the city. I have spoken with a number of my colleagues on council, and one of the things I did want to clear are two things. One, that this policy does not seek to be limited to resolutions presented just by the mayor, but by the city council. So one of the things I would like to recommend with this as clarifying language is that it speaks to the policy of the city to have the consistent guidelines around this. And so I would ask, particularly as it relates to the paragraph, be it hereby resolved, that it's a, instead of the office of the mayor, that it be the policy of the city. And so to replace those words, so it is clear that these resolutions can come forth either from the mayor or from a member of council. And one of the other things you have received in your packet, significant milestones, birthdays, anniversaries, I have taken into consideration and given some examples of milestones, not to limit it just, you know, people who are seventy-five and older, so sixteen, twenty, thirty milestone birthdays and anniversaries, ten, twenty-five, fifty, those kind of things. So that's clarifying language under items two C and D.
Do you have discussion?
Okay. Clerk? Does that, is that any? Is that any action?
Clerk, is that an action?
Yes.
This is an action out of intention, a resolution, I'm assuming, as proposed through an amendment by Mayor Potem Rowell. This can be voted on and approved.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to.
Twenty seventeen, oh two point.
I would like to motion to approve twenty-seven, ordinance twenty-seven seventeen dash oh two oh three.
Right, remove the second, discussion. Councilwoman, here you are.
In the be it hereby resolved, in the last section, it said, the issuance of any proclamation or letter from the mayor's office is at the complete discretion of the mayor's office. Is there something in the charter that it says that it is at the complete discretion of the mayor's office? I'm just wondering why that was.
Which is why I started the conversation, that I wanted to clarify that, no, it doesn't have to limit, this really speaks to the city having some kind of parameters by which to respond to these kind of inquiries. So I, in fact, am proposing to take out mayor's office and say it is the city's policy. That's what I referred to in this, that paragraph when I did my opening remarks on this resolution.
Okay, so be this, the way you write it.
Okay, the issuance of any proclamation or letter from the city, in fact, you can strike that sentence here. Is that be acceptable?
Yes, that's acceptable. And then number three, it says, the mayor will only be issued for souvenir publications or upon requests. We want to be in the souvenir publication too. It's just going to be the mayor's.
Well, this was really speaking to typical, and it is, of course, a city council person speaking, that you, they may ask for a letter of support, inclusion in a souvenir program if they were hosting a conference, for example, that it wouldn't be customary that you would just automatically, that they could request it. So it could be mayor or council, as I indicated, that we kind of described in those words, limited to just.
So bear with me, ma'am. Okay, so now, number four, and I guess, you know, initially, we might not really know what we were doing, because, you know, we came up with proclamations for really good causes, and then, you know, we were asking each other to sign. And so this one says that there are ceremonial documents and they're only signed by the head. And I'm not really focusing on the fact that it's just there, but I'm just, you know, trying to figure out why city council is not included along with the.
As I indicated in the beginning, it would not be limited to just, that's what the point I was trying to make.
So just say that, though.
Right. It applies to that, if you see that reference, it is not just limited to that.
Okay. Okay, making proclamation requests. So who can and cannot make a request?
It says, any resident by any city of Southwood resident.
And so it includes us on the first page, that we can make one too.
It goes without saying that the council can.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes. And if you go in number four, C, I heard you doing a lot of striking. This is something that we spoke about like a week after we were sworn in. C says, the mayor's office, the mayor's office reserves the right to modify or deny any recognition or proclamation request. Yeah, that's kind of tough. So I like, so I heard what you read before, but.
Read it again.
And here, it says, yeah, oh, it says, the mayor's office reserves the right to modify or deny any recognition or proclamation request.
It's proclamation. Is proclamation request part of the agenda?
This is our resolution.
I didn't make a statement.
While we're striking, I just want to know while we're striking, you know, strike on.
I'm just saying, I hear what you're saying, and I don't...
Well, it's our vote, so, I mean, I just wanted to make that known, that it is in there, that anything can be denied or modified, you know, per the mayor's office.
The mayor says that, just...
So are you suggesting that you would like me to consider to, oh, just remove that altogether? Is that what you're asking?
Definitely.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Or do we have a motion? We have a motion, all right? Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
It seems unanimous, that motion carries.
Also, under unfinished business, you have a resolution to amend the city's holiday schedule to recognize Election Day as an annual official city holiday designed and returning as a result of these.
All right, you bear with me for a minute. I would like my unpaid intern to come up to the podium. I had him do a project that may be interesting to you. Mark, you have it.
Good evening, city council, mayor, staff, citizens. I took the liberty of doing a feasibility study, if you will, on what the cost and benefits would be for the election day to be made a holiday in the city of South Fulton.
Stephen, do you have a slide?
Yes, sir. Can you introduce yourself? Introduction, sir.
My name is Julian Torres, and I'm a proud resident of District Two in the city of South Fulton.
Amen.
You just finished what?
And I just finished my senior thesis at Hampton University. I wanted to share some of my concerns, as well as some of my findings in the study. Some of the concerns would be that the resolution states, "Election day shall be observed as a holiday annually on city of South Fulton election years." My concern was specifically, when will this occur annually on odd years? Or would it be currently, and was the city of South Fulton election years fall on odd years? The resolution also currently states, "Holding of Election Day and Tuesday most greatly disavails middle and low-income workers." However, early voting accommodates voters' weekend schedules as well as in addition to weekday voting hours. Even then, how does this impact all of their elections, i.e. special elections? As well as Georgia law allows for two hours' time off for employees to participate in the election process. And election education cannot be facilitated by the city. In the study, I did the comparison between Clarkstale, Georgia, and Puerto Rico because they are more clearly represented in the study for the feasibility of the holiday. And it has seen that it costs the city of Clarkstale, Georgia, four thousand dollars every two years based on the amount paid for personnel on a half-day. As well as Puerto Rico, it is a non-incorporated territory of the United States. That means it does have its autonomy, but it does not have sovereignty in which it has its own constitution, its own set of laws, and its own elected officials. However, its laws and decisions are subject to override by the United States government, which Puerto Rico does not help elect any of the United States elected officials. Citizens of Puerto Rico can vote in the presidential primary, however, they do not share vote in the presidential election. And according to the study done by H.S. Farber upon increasing voter turnout is the March of Days to answer, he is quoted as saying, "Puerto Rico has institutionalized substantial election day political activity designed to mobilize voters. This confounding factor makes it difficult to conclude anything about the effect of an election day holiday in our voter, on voter turnout from the experience of Puerto Rico." However, it must also be noted that Puerto Rico's legislation applies to citizens, and it does not directly correlate to employee turnout. It's been found that, as it was quoted, that there is no evidence from the natural experiment of states providing an election holiday for state employees that such holidays significantly increase voter turnout. I conclude that having an election holiday by itself is not an effective strategy to increase voter turnout. It's also quoted as saying, "Grant voters the day off does not increase voter turnout."
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to share some recommendations. I would share a recommendation with the council, in that in compliance with state law, city of South Fulton employees are currently allowed only two hours for election-related participation on Election Day. And as with Georgia law, OCGA twenty-one dash two dash four oh eight, four oh four, forgive me. It says, "Each employee in this state shall upon reasonable notice to his or employer be permitted by his or her employer to take any necessary time off from his or her employment to vote in any municipal, county, state, or federal political party primary or election for which such employees qualified and registered to vote on this day qualified and registered to vote. On which such primary or elections held, provided, however, that such necessary time off should not exceed two hours, and provided further that the hours of work of such employee can miss at least two hours after the opening of the polls or in at least two hours prior to the closing of the polls. Then the time off for voting as provided for in this code section should not be available. The employer may specify the hours during which the employee may absent himself or herself as provided in the scope section." Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's a lot of research for nothing. It's almost like a forty-five dollar employee. But, uh, let me just, let me just say this. When you come to make a proposal for anything, you need to do exactly what he just did then. You bring the facts. Then you give, you say what the process is going to be. What's the impact? And what's the outcome? Then you have something to consider. I thought it was vague. Listen, let me tell you something. You can't tell these people up here about voting. We know the importance. We've been doing voting education since late. We've done all over the years, Representative Jackson. You've done, Roger, you've done, and Joe Carr, you've done. We've done everything we can to get people out to come to vote. And sometimes, though, we still are lagging behind. So my opposition is, is that, you know, Emma Donnell says there's something one time that's really true. She says, "It's all about outcomes." What are the outcomes? How is this going to push voter responsibility up three, four, five, six percent? And based on what? That's all I'm looking for. That's a presentation that has not been made to us here at the board. So I stand by what I said. I've talked to Mr. Khalid, and he, we talked to Kim off, we talked about things, we told him the fact that this ain't over. There's still opportunity here. It ain't over. But I just think that we need to have a better presentation, we need to be more factual, and we need to talk about our outcomes. Someone told me that one thing we need to be talking about is, you know, holiday, maybe make the holiday and clean up these streets.
Amen.
Take the holiday and do some other things. But, uh, I'm still going to hold to my big toe. If I'm overridden, this council will override me, and I will abide by the decision of this council. Thank you.
Can I have a question?
You said it last time.
Okay. So first, I want to thank your assistants for doing that research. It is awesome to have a paid full-time, a full-time paid staff person and interns. Hopefully, we can get an intern at least soon. We do have a thing, we do have a resolution coming out to at least get part-time staff because we have no one as council. Uh, but I do want to point out a contradiction that I heard in your research, sir, and that was that the city of South Fulton cannot do political education. Uh, but you also said in your research that the reason that Puerto Rico was successful is because they had institutionalized voting culturally. And so there is, uh, there are clauses in this ordinance that speak to institutionalizing political education. And that will happen regardless of the outcome of this vote. We will have an electoral college who will be doing education. So the second thesis is that, so here's a little political education. The American Legislative Exchange Council is a group called Alec. They copy and paste conservative legislation throughout the country. It's one of the things we'll be talking about at the electoral college. Uh, but one of the reasons that we can only make legislation for employees is because Georgia has these preemption laws, so we can't raise the minimum wage. We can't do a lot of progressive things that we see other people doing in other places because these preemption laws preclude us from making laws that affect anyone else but our employees. But this really isn't about employees. Uh, this holiday really isn't for anyone who's in this room. We know that you all come out to vote. It's about creating a culture of voting that encourages new voters to come into the process. I want to remind you that for our first election, we had sixteen days of early voting, including Saturday voting, and four out of people, four out of five people did not show up to vote. Uh, for our runoff, we had six days of early voting, and we still had three out of four people not show up to vote. So this isn't an either-or, this is a both-and. We can have Saturday voting, we can have early voting, and we can have an election day holiday that focuses people on political education. I would also remind people that every year in South Fulton is an election year. We have citywide municipal elections on odd years, and then on even years, we have state and federal elections. We actually have an election this year. Most of our voters in South Fulton will be going to the polls on November seventh to vote for a state senator. Should Vincent Ford, who is apparently currently running for mayor, should he qualify, we'll have to pick a new state senator. Uh, one of the people running for that office is a South Fulton resident who comes here often. So that's the kind of political education that we need to be doing. So I want to talk policy. And my concern is that if we're creating a policy that we need to check in with the people and that we need to check in with workers before we make any decision, I'm all for that. I'm a socialist. So if we want to check in with the people, if we want to do a Jackson-Cush plan and do participatory budgeting, we should check in with people all the time. But we haven't checked in with them about the timing of the departments that we're bringing over. We just moved, where we voted last session, to move hundreds of employees off of the merit system that they've been on for years in Fulton County and put them on an at-will system. We made that change without any sort of consultation with any of those employees. Instead of paying class schedule, and we're bringing virtually every department head in the door making nearly six figures. We didn't consult anybody about that. Last week, we spent five thousand dollars putting stickers on code enforcement vehicles. We didn't talk to anybody about that. We haven't even settled on the seal, like the mayor said. So, you know, if we're going to run all of our decisions by the people, I just want us to be consistent and not create a standard of this legislation that we have not enforced anywhere else.
Okay. I had a request from Representative Bruce to say if you were...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This has been an interesting meeting for me. As the primary author of the charter that you are operating under, you know, there's things that I wanted to point out because if you don't point things out that you see that might be wrong, then that makes you complicit in what's wrong. You got to speak up. And I have consciously stayed away from these meetings because I did not want to get into minutia of what you do there. My role was to get the bill passed in the General Assembly, and your role is to do what the charter says to do. And the chart is very clear that your role as mayor and council is to set policies. It is not to run the day-to-day operation of the city.
Amen.
And that was a conscious decision by the members of the General Assembly when we put this together. We wanted a professional person who had the background and experience to run a city, to run this city. We wanted you, as policymakers, to talk to the people who are in your districts and who you represent, to get their ideas and input on policy, not on the day-to-day operation of this city.
Absolutely.
And I see you guys going down a path that I'm concerned about. And that's why I wanted to come up here tonight. One has to deal with this issue of you having personal assistants. Let's be for real. Your job as policymakers does not require an assistant. And if it does, then maybe you shouldn't be up there. Because the role for you to be there is to come up with policy. You take that policy, you talk about it at these meetings, and you come to an agreement about it. And if you pass that policy, then it goes to the city manager, and her staff or his staff, whoever ends up in this job permanently, is to administer it. That ain't your job. It is not your job to be at that office every day questioning every single thing that goes on. That's not your job. And what I'm concerned about also with regard to these assistants, you know, I've been in this game for a long, long time, and I've seen people go to jail over little small things. And if you have a personal assistant, and that job has not been defined as to what that personal assistant is supposed to be doing, it's a thin line between what is campaigning, which the city is not supposed to be paying for, you campaigns. It's a very thin line. And what I don't want to see, you know, I know every single one of you, and I don't want to visit you in jail for having this personal assistant do things that are campaign-related. So I really want you to reconsider this notion of hiring somebody to be a personal assistant. You get you some, you know, some folks like this young man who did an excellent job of presenting. There are students all over the place that would love to have an opportunity to work with you and learn how this process works, that could serve the purpose. Secondly, the budget, you know, that was designed for this city, and I say the budget, the proposed budget that the transition team put together, did not include personal assistants. Okay, you have not yet started collecting taxes, and you're spending money that you don't have yet with these personal assistants. Again, I'm not here to scold you. I'm here because I don't want to see anybody get in trouble. And I don't want to see the city go down the wrong path. And if I didn't say something, then like I said, I'd be complicit. And I don't want to be complicit in doing something wrong. I think that you guys need to really take a moment and focus on what really has to get done, which is the transition of those city, of those county employees over to this city. That's really all you need to be working on right now. All the rest of this fluffy stuff is inconsistent with the timeframe that you are locked into. You had two years from the time that the bill was passed to transition this, the... You had two years from the time that the bill was passed to transition these people over from the county, and that time is running out very, very quickly. And if you don't put policies and procedures in place that allow that transition to happen smoothly, we're going to be paying for it for a long time to come. You didn't give me a timeframe, but I'm going to limit my own time. But the net of it is that, like I said, I know all of you have good intentions. I really do. I believe that you all have the best interests of the city at heart, but you need to show that by your actions. And your actions right now, as I sat here tonight, and as I, you know, looked at all the stuff on the internet, and I've gone through, I've talked to everybody up there just about it. Nobody can explain to you what you're going to do with this personal assistant that won't get you in trouble. So far, nobody has come up with anything that has said that this person is not going to get you in trouble. Because I'm hearing things about going to meetings for you. That's your job. You go to meetings. You know, so bottom line to it is that you need to really refocus on what has to be done. You have to transition those employees from the county to the city. And after you get that done, then you start dealing with all this other stuff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come out and talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce, for that. I do want to get back to this election day holiday. I would like to take you back to July twenty-fifth. So on July twenty-fifth, Mr. Mayor, you said, "If you vote yes, I will follow the wishes of this board." And the very next day, the very next day, you issued a bill. I personally feel that there's, we do have other priorities. Political education will always be one, and there is so much, there is so much we can do together on a national and for the whole city. But I don't know how I'm going to work with you when I can't trust what you say. So I hope that we can fix that.
Mr. Khalid, there's going to be time on this board and time in your political career you going to change your mind based on facts and outside information. That was cute. That was really cute to play that. But when, at the end of the day, yeah, I said, "At the end of the day, and information comes in, I'm going to try to do what I can do the best for the citizens of this community and this state." And let me tell you, Mr. Bruce is absolutely right. We got to work on those things, and that window is getting short.
Yes, it is.
And we got to work on those things. We had a lady, Mr. Khalid, that came to that podium and said, "We got to get a name. We got to get a seal." Now, I could run some texts, I could run off some texts off my phones that telling me that, "Thank you for the veto." I could run your hundred up on that board up there. But you don't have to like me, you don't have to trust me, you don't have to love me, you just got to work with me. I told you that to your face. I said, "Somewhere down the line, Mr. Khalid, I would hope that you find something in me as we work together that will change your mind." I'm not trying to be personal. Personality get us nowhere. We got a job to do. We have a job to do. And so I've said that to you before. I'm willing to stand behind what I said. I pray to God that our relationship gets better, because if our relationship gets better, the city gets better. I've left here many times, many times I've left here feeling bad about something that was voted on. And many times I let it stand, Mr. Khalid, many times I let it stand. I've let stuff go on here where you brought in your resolution ten minutes before, the doggone vote, and I let that slide. But I'm going to tell you about it. I'm here, people voted on me to leave, and that's what I'm going to do. I don't want to be known as the veto commission, I mean, the veto mayor, but if I have to, when it makes sense, if I have to. How many people from Fulton County came to that microphone and said anything about this? How many people from the city came to that microphone today and said anything in defense of this? Now, I don't know what the people in Atlanta say. God bless them. Thank you. But it's the people in South Fulton who come in here that makes a difference for us. So, Mr. Khalid, I'm sorry. Maybe you think I'm a liar, maybe I can miss you later on, I might be not a liar. I'm sorry that you feel that way. I'm sorry you feel that I misrepresented you. But I guarantee you, there are going to be some times when your mind is going to be changed twenty-four hours after you leave here, you know, based on other facts that you... And let me clarify it. What did I say? I said, "If I had the facts, what is it all about?" You know, what's the outcome? What percentage of you going to increase voting? All these facts, if I had those facts in your presentation when you first made it, then maybe I hadn't, would have changed my mind. But after getting things and seeing things, you quoted Puerto Rico, and you quoted Clarkston. We went to research both of them. That study is this dick. He read you the conclusion. So I'm not mad with nobody, man. I mean, I'm really not mad with anybody. But we're going to have to run this city, and we run this city the best way we can. So I'm going to stick to my veto. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to override the veto. I make a motion to override the veto.
I second.
Probably moves in second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I want to thank everybody for actually coming out to deliver their remarks. And a lot of you do not live in our city, so I do respectfully say thank you, but you can't really determine the impact that this will have on our city. I spoke to Councilman Khalid, and he is very aware of me not being in favor of this resolution. I think it is actually a great resolution. I think that we can move forward, but the timing right now is not right. I do believe that there's still some additional vetting that needs to occur if you are going to do that, and then also some collaboration as a community. So again, you know, Khalid, I commend you for putting this resolution together. Again, like I said, it's progressive, it's forward-thinking, and I really commend you for that, but we still have our due diligence to do regarding this matter. So that's my comments in regards to that.
Councilwoman Willis.
Khalid, I would like to say that thank you for, this is a great idea, but it's not great timing. We need to focus on transitioning our employees over. And you know, originally, I was going to co-part with this legislation for you, but I too changed my mind. And it was two things that gave me pause. One was the protests from employees who directly came to me and asked why we were changing their holidays. And their concern was, some of them had children. And to take that Columbus Day, which was in sync of the school holiday, was going to cause a burden for them to have to buy childcare. So the other thing that gave me pause was the residents who put me in the seat from District Three. And their concern was, we need to focus on transitioning employees, being physically responsible, and cleaning up the city, and also getting a name. So I am going to vote on the premise of supporting the employee and also supporting the people who put me in this seat, because this is the residence of District Three seat that I am sitting in.
Councilwoman, thank you.
I want to be clear, and I second that motion because I do understand, and as I understood before we came in here, and I spoke with the mayor about the possibility of him overriding his veto. And the thing is, I stand in solidarity with Councilman Khalid in reference to this day, not just because of it being a holiday, but because of the premise behind it, that I wish he would have had the opportunity to come forward and give a full presentation as I received. Councilman Khalid had great ideas in reference to the education that, you know, the intern who came up and gave great presentation, Doc. But to say that we can't, as a city, provide educational practices regarding elections is a farce. I think that that's a big deal. I think that it's important that you did point out that you get two hours in most jobs to come and vote. But I would venture to say that my kids at Lacy Hughes, who are working and all of these other people, and many people in here probably didn't even know that that was their right. So I think the bigger deal is the educational process that accompanied this resolution. And I'm pretty sure after this and everybody coming out, as well as the edification of the council, you will see it again next year, as well as the amplification of it in the communities, because we've had, just like the mayor has received those text messages, I've received several emails, you know, in solidarity with this position for more so educating our younger demographic on what's going on, because I bet you, they don't know that they can go out for two hours and come forward. And that's a start to adding to that less than ten percent of the people who came out and voted for us on March twenty-first.
In the first discussion...
I've received phone calls and emails per one time. Oh, there it is. Can you hear me? I've received emails and phone calls per one time. Some people say no, and some people say yes, and I agree that the education is a big piece of it. If you work, and one of the things that Khalid did talk about is how far people work. So if you work in Sandy Springs, and you only get two hours, that's not happening. And you might, you might be able to do it on the weekends, and some people don't even know that there's such a thing as advance voting. So there is an educational process that people have to go through, and whether you do it before you vote for this or after you vote for it is, I don't know, it's just up in the air. But I just think it is a good idea. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Willis. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Jackson.
Representative Bruce, I wish you had been here a couple of months ago to give that statement about...
I was trying to give you a chance to figure it out.
No, we needed you a couple of months ago, hiring people, and, you know, that might put people in positions to go to jail. But what I'm saying is that I do agree. I got to tell the truth is the truth. So Khalid, I do appreciate, you know, what you set out to do. We will be back next year, okay, with this same vote, okay?
In the first discussion, all right, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
You need five votes. You can bet. Takes five votes to override the veto.
The next item was added to today's agenda during the adoption of the agenda, and this is a resolution sponsored by Councilmember Khalid. It is a resolution for parity of pay among mayor and council staff. And I'll be assigning this resolution, item number twenty-seventeen-zero-thirty-nine.
And it's called what?
The Resolution for Parity of Pay Among Mayor and Council Staff. That's the item, item that he added during the adoption.
Well, somebody want to break that down to Mr.... Mr. Attorney, break it down.
So, yeah, this is the resolution, this is probably the one that should be spoken on. This is the one we just added, to add our seven part-time council aides. The mayor has a full-time, a full-time aide, and so we are asking that our part-time aides make no less than seventy-five percent of that salary without benefits that the mayor's assistant gets full-time with.
Let me, let me just say this. Hold up. Okay. Ruth, would you all go put this lineup that shows other municipalities, so the audience can see it? How many other cities here? It's the last, it's the last page of that. Now, let me, we have to get something else I have to say too. Let me say this. Here's what that equates to. Twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven thousand, four cents per hour. Seven-hundred-eighty-four dollars, twenty-five cents per week for twenty-nine hours. Five thousand, four hundred eighty-nine for the remainder of this year. An annual salary, twenty-nine weeks, for a part-time staffer, forty thousand, seven-hundred and eighty-one dollars. Some people don't make that full-time. We got folks at the county now who ain't making that full-time. You know, so that's an issue, Ms. Gilliard. So, I mean, you know, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what it is that you, you know, I am the mayor of a hundred thousand people. Now, I don't know how many in your district, but I know that I get phone calls of people in the district asking me to come out and do this and that, and I can't turn them down because if you call me, you in my district. We provided, let me tell you, we provided everything. You know, when the issue came up with offices, we covered that, now we providing offices. Mark, we suppose, and Joe, we getting furniture for the offices next week, right? All right? We talked that we provided, Ruth, that we not provide expense accounts for travel and things like that, nation? We provided that. Now here we come with forty thousand, some odd dollars to pay somebody. I mean, listen, man, I'm just going to tell you that, you know, everybody shoots at me because I'm the mayor, but I've done everything in that chart. If you want to be mayor, sign on the line. It ain't easy sitting up in here. I'm going to tell you right now. So you can throw at my executive assistant, you can throw at my office, you can throw at a lot of things, but I'm the mayor for a hundred thousand people. And here was so funny, Representative, this is basically the same district I had when I was Fulton County Commissioner. That's how many fuck I had. And I told Delores, she used to be my chief of staff, I told her, now you my chief and So, I mean, I just, I don't want to take this personal. I really don't. But just put, you don't put down there seventy-five percent of the mayor's person, just put down there what you want. Tell them forty thousand dollars, what you playing with it for? Tell them forty thousand dollars, what you playing with it for? You know, I think that's a low sh- I think that's a, that's a shot below the belt there. Sit there and talk about my staff first, and you trying to get yours. Young man come up there, you know, I mean, it's plenty of them out there like him. Yeah, I got him, because he free. If you was, if he was free to you, you'd get it too. He free. And he got some friends who free. So maybe we just need to look into that. But I just don't like this personal types on my staff and me about the mayor this, and the mayor got that, and the mayor did this, and the mayor did that. It ain't about that. It's really not about that. I'm there twelve, thirteen hours a week, am I not? You, you say more than that. I'm at your, I'm at, I'm at your meetings. I was at the school in the morning at seven o'clock, shaking hands with, with, with Domena and, and Mr. Reed there. Shaking hands at seven o'clock in the morning with children. Check my Facebook out and see where I'm at. So I just don't like the implication that, that goes directly to me and my office. I think that that's unfair. Just put down what you want, ain't got nothing to do with me. Just put down what you want. Thank you. Go ahead.
I just want citizens to know that when we went through the transition process, um, we were told that this was going to be a challenging job. We were told we were going to be operating with a limited budget. We were told that we were going to have limited resources. Now, research has been done, um, for our city. And we have been compared to, to other cities comparable to our size, and also who has council, mayor-type government. And most of the cities have co-shared, um, staff that run through the clerk's office, no more than two. And we also received Georgia Municipal Association training this last week. And we were also, it was also recommended, because we were a startup city, that we need to make sure that we run a very lean budget. I think I have already spoken with HR, and I have asked HR, with the commissioner Ruth, if they will work with our city council and partner with other technical schools in the area, metro Atlanta area, and colleges, uh, to do a partnership for us to get interns. I think that's a better route, especially with us being a, a startup city, and it will be cost-effective. I just think we have police officers we have to hire, we have buyer personnel we have to hire. You know, that's where our priorities should be, and transitioning our employees over to the city. I am not in favor of hiring a seven, uh, personal assistants that will be paid up to forty-five thousand dollars a year. That's, I, I just don't think that's fiscally responsible.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to say that, um, um, we've seen stats in the state of Georgia, and many of the cities in the state of Georgia don't have, and they're not a personal assistants, they're aides. In other cities, they call them constituent representatives. And so those constituent representatives help the council folks with a lot of things they have to do. The one big difference between us and all of the other cities is that we just start now. And we have a city that has not had the services that it should have had for a long time. So our phones ring off the hook about we need this, we need that, what about this, what about that? And we can't do it all, that's the point. We really can't do it all in terms of serving everyone. It's different when you walk into the situation that's up and running, and been running for years. It's fairly easy, but this one is really, really difficult. And you get really sometimes some kind of crazy things that you have to run down. So the assistance is really, really needed. I'm finding myself just trying to keep up with the calendar is becoming a challenge in terms of sometimes missing meetings because, you know, I just don't have all of the resources that I really need. I'm still working in my office at home, and I haven't complained about it. And that's what I'm doing because I know that we don't have the money, and there's a lot of things that we do not have. And I also know that the transition piece of it, I have to give the city manager and their staff the, um, the kudos for having a plan. And they're really the ones that are really doing that. We're the ones that are dealing with the community without the assistance. And so it's really, 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 really needed. And you know as well, city manager, that I've received requests from people, and I've sent it to you, and said, "Help with this and help with that," and you haven't even been able to help with it yet. And I haven't been able to get back with them, because I really don't want to say we really can't do it. But I do know that you're overburdened because I know that there are not that many people, uh, in your office. So it's a, a real challenge in terms of having a slim budget, having all this work to do, and not really being able to meet the demands, so...
Okay, yeah, I got you, let me just say this in response to, to that. Um, you know, you paying somebody forty thousand dollars, I don't care what you call it.
I didn't say money.
And I'm gonna say this to you, you ever heard of a term called e-commerce fulfillment center? That's a warehouse. No matter what you call it, my thing is this. What are they gonna be doing? How are they gonna be doing it? What's gonna be their hours? Are we gonna mandate that they're gonna work twenty-nine hours? Because if they work over twenty-nine hours, you got to pay them benefits. Alright, I mean, you, you, I'm saying, if it's over twenty-nine, you pay them benefits. How are we gonna regulate that? Alright? Because one thing I know, ladies and gentlemen, been in this business a long time, and those girls and humanists can tell you that. You can be your friend, and your friend tell you, "Well, that's alright, I'm gonna work tonight." Alright? And soon as you get mad with them, soon as you get mad with them, then they go down there to the labor board, and they're gonna make a pay every time that they, that they, that they went overtime. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, we have, we need, like I say about the other thing. Where is the program? Where is the job description? Where is everything so we'll know what we're looking at? What are they gonna be doing?
I have a job description.
Well, it ain't presented that.
No, but you'll get it.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, so first, let me, let me say this, in all fairness, we were presented with two options for help. When we first came in the door, we were presented with two options. So all of this that we're discussing right now, we getting a lot of gray areas. We were given two options. One was for three full-time council aides, and then another one was for seven part-time council aides with no benefits. Now, if we all are being fiscally sound, it will make more sense to bring seven part-time people onboard, let me finish, onboard before you bring three full-time with benefits. It is more over the long term, it will cost more. However, we have been struggling for resources. We are struggling to get support. I had an intern, an unpaid intern. I worked her behind off, running around for District Two, and even for the city. So I get the program that y'all are presenting, but there's no continuity because every three months, somebody will be leaving and you will be bringing somebody else in. So we need to find some level of support for our council, whether it be aides or whatever the case may be. We need support, emails, phone calls, and I work full-time. I have no problem with being here till nine-thirty-eight or nine. Because that's what I was elected to do, however, we need support, period. I'm not voting for seven aides, no, because right now, I, I, it's, it's correct. We don't know what money we have, but I do think we need it, I think we need support. And that's it, I think we need support. And I normally don't say a whole lot, but I see that we have people out here, it is time for our city to move forward. And that's all I'm gonna say right now.
Alright. In the first discussion?
Yes. Uh, so I want to respond to a couple of things that were said, yes. We were originally, um, offered three full-time aides. I don't have a problem sharing, uh, an aide. We don't have three full-time aides. We've been talking about this issue for months, and we've been talking about how we were going to get interns, and seeing an intern get. Uh, I don't think anyone in my district would say that I don't work hard. Uh, so I won't have any problems with my district. Um, I do want to point out that this resolution in no way compels anyone up here to hire a part-time aide. So we currently have no staff, right? Uh, we have no staff to go through the hundreds of pages of legal documents, we have no staff to ask people to say to respond to constituent complaints. And if it is your choice, if you think that this is a bad idea, even if this passes, you could continue on with no staff. Uh, and at the end of your term, you can proudly say, "I didn't vote for this, I didn't agree with it, and I never hired a part-time aide. I never spent any of the money." And I, for one, will have the utmost respect for you because then you will have carried out your office in a manner that is consistent. They'll hear me say that a lot because it's important to be consistent with how you voted tonight. But now if this passes, and then you go out and get a part-time aide too, even though you just said that, you know, you thought it was a bad idea, the record's gonna reflect that as well. So I just want to point out, um, should this pass, no one has to hire an aide that they, that doesn't want to. The three or four people that vote for it, if they want to get aides and everybody else doesn't, that is, that is a possibility. That is a way that you can save money and live out your values.
May I?
Yes.
Um, I would just like to say, um, we were given two scenarios, and I just totaled up one, um, long edition. But the, uh, first was, uh, the total came to five hundred and fifty-one thousand sixty-two dollars and forty cents. That did not include the benefits. That was the one that, uh, they actually wanted us to take. And the one that we were looking at was part-time without benefits, which came to three hundred and sixteen thousand six eighty for the year. But basically with these next two months, it would not be there. But it, I don't understand, we did not accept the first one, which was much more, which would have doubled actually with benefits. So if you're looking at five fifty-one without benefits, that's like a million dollars, and that's not including the city clerk in his position. So you're looking at a million dollars right there, and then, or close to. And then all we were looking at was three hundred and sixteen thousand. So that's all I'm saying, it's something, something's just not right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And you know, you, I'm sort of like, uh, karma, I don't really like go into details a lot. But, you know, my man is growing on me. You know, I grew up in church, and it's like, I'm, I'm seeing him talk, my daddy's a pastor, and it's like, I get it. And I get the amen factor from the people who sit before me. And it's brilliant, but I'm, like, I didn't get here for this, like, I'm not here to be a politician. Like, I, in my heart, want to be a public servant, and that's what I am. And if I'm gonna be radically honest, I'm not gonna sit here and rock y'all to sleep because what's been happening is, y'all hit forty thousand dollars, and everybody said, and started wilding, and I can't believe that number, when you heard it from at least four people, that we were offered three positions that cost more than that, and we chose to take seven for part-time. And we, this is a discussion that was deferred months ago when you guys weren't present, just to accommodate a bill that we thought was coming in from the county in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Regardless, we've deferred it. So let's, let's, let's go all the way and be real and let y'all know what's going on, as opposed to taking on parts of it, getting up and telling people that walked out and don't understand and heavily digest that we're working. We don't get enough money to put gas in our car with the check that we get paid. I want to be here. When I say I'm a public servant, the, the mayor, he definitely was at Langston Hughes. You know why I know? Because I was there too, after he left. But before that, I was at McNair Middle School at seven-thirty, right after I dropped my kids off, with another fifty young men, fifty men clapping and applauding the McNair students back in the building. I left McNair, went to Renaissance Middle School, stayed there, did the same thing, checked in with their council to make sure that their first day was good. Left Renaissance, went to Renaissance Elementary, went to Bear Creek Middle, went to Everly C West, and then I went to Langston Hughes, and that's when I found out the mayor was there. So I went to seven schools on yesterday morning, seven schools. And then I drove to Macon and came back by four to pick up my child. The thing is, it's not about money, it's not, it's just about health. When I was at Bear Creek, you know who I visited? And I sat there and I talked with Jeff Rose, the Fulton County Superintendent, who said, "Man, I see you everywhere." The police officer, "Man, I was just over there, you over here too?" And so the conversations is like, yo, I want to set it up so I can come to your council meetings, so we can bridge the gap because clearly, y'all concerned about the city. Meanwhile, he has no idea what I'm going through. Beyond that, the biggest thing is, when I was at Bear Creek, the first person I met at the door was the, was the nurse's aide who went through my CNA nursing program at, on the old national, just over the summer. A program that I introduced in May. So we working, not just working there, the apprenticeship program that when we mentioned those other municipalities, I know Joe Carr was in here, and he sure asked me to forward him my apprenticeship program so some of his kids can take advantage of it in college bar. Outside of that, the in-home nursing care that I met Fast Ally Health was with them Saturday and all last week, trying to set it up so free nursing care could, could come to my people in this city? So I don't sleep at all, and I'm a machine. So when we rock you to sleep by telling you a number, it's not fitting you. Because we were offered three positions, who would stay in that office? And who would provide service for all seven of us equally? I don't know how that would work, but we changed it up ourselves because we were thinking to be fiscally responsible. So please be advised and note to yourself, whoever doesn't vote, and if it does pass, if they get a council aide, you should really look at them with a furrow in your brow. Thank you.
I would like to say, I, I want to, I want to echo what I've seen from all my colleagues on council. We do work extremely hard, and we take a lot of beating, and not a lot of appreciation for the work. Um, my reason, and I'll, I'll be very clear, is I just think we're at a very critical point in standing up our city. It wasn't because I didn't realize that we, in fact, do need help. Um, two of us, uh, work full-time on council, and the support would be needed. But our original discussions really spoke to waiting till we got to fiscal year twenty eighteen, October first. Again, my position, we have a, a firmer stand on where we stood financially, I still stand behind that. But I do respect and understand the need because I too get the calls, I too have responded to emails all times of the night. This is, for the most part, a thankless job. And so I do want the, the community in general to be cognizant of that. We get put in a lot of directions, and we are a new city, we are not like any other city that's currently stood up. The expectations are high, the workload is heavy. Um, and so, um, even though, and I, and I'm clear, I am, I'm not going to support this, but I do understand the need, and I, and I hope it's something that we look at for next fiscal year. But, um, however, both those, I support the council.
In the first discussion?
I have a question for the city manager. Um, what is in the, what is being put in the budget for twenty eighteen for council aides?
This is a discussion that you recall that we started last week when we, on Wednesday, in talking about that. And so the decision as to what will be placed in the, uh, budget will be based on your decisions tonight.
You say what? The budget will be based?
On your decision tonight.
I'll entertain a motion. I make a motion to adopt this resolution for, uh, parity of staff pay. Seven part-time council aides.
Seven.
Probably moving second in the first of discussion. Probably move to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those who oppose? That passes. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you now to the City Manager's Weekly Update.
Mr. Mayor and council, you have in your packet the written document as it relates to the update. And, and what we are, are doing... Last week, I wanna say thank you because you did take, um, some extensive time out of your schedule so we can start the budgeting process, and we will continue to go with that budgeting process. You are scheduled, if you look at your, um, budget calendar, to receive the proposed two thousand and eighteen budget, uh, by Friday of this week. And so staff has been working all week to get that document ready for you. And in fact, if you could refrain from calling us tomorrow, we appreciate it because we gonna lock ourselves in the conference room and we gonna get finished. And so on the budget, so that we can get all of that actually accomplished and meet all of your timetables that were established, um, for us to do. We have been working with moving over court enforcement, which is our next area of transition. You have met the two staff people that have joined us, uh, since our last meeting. All of the other information of the things that we have been working on, you can find them in the written document. And I'll entertain any questions you might have about the document.
Um, I just wanna make a motion that you conclude for the second part-time council aide. You said that you needed that. You needed, uh, direction from us tonight, so I'll make sure we remind you of that direction.
Do you need any other direction on that, City Manager?
No, ma'am.
Are there any other updates to your report?
That concludes my report.
It's the pleasure of the council. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
You, you either have mayor and city council comments, and then there was also, um, an action taken in executive session that Councilman Gumm's is requesting to be announced.
Um, the clerk, we can now send her the action taken in executive session.
It is your pleasure.
It is the pleasure of the council.
All right. During executive session, there was a motion made by Councilmember Gumm saying by Councilmember Baker to direct the HR department to release the RFP for the position of county manager.
City manager.
I'm sorry. Yes, I picked up what mayor was saying, city manager. Thank you.
Um, and then the last action is we'll start, um, on the end. Councilman Gumm, make the lead in terms of giving an update.
No, this action was taken as in executive session, so our clerk is just recording out.
I think the attorney is asking that you all publicly...
Oh, you want us to act? I'll take a vote.
I make the... I make the motion that we go ahead and release the RFP on executive search for a permanent city manager. And I would like for the HR department to provide a four-to-six month timetable of what we need to do. Um, well, I'm sorry. For... I think it was possibly too much. November twenty-second. However, I need the HR department to provide a timetable of what we need and to get a permanent city manager onboard.
I say.
Okay. Chief, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Jackson.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that? Uh, can I add the, um, the, uh, police chief as well to that motion?
So you accept her friendly amendment?
Yes.
I'll propose. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No, I didn't vote.
No, you have to ask.
Any proposition?
Are there, is there?
Is, are there any other action items on the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Then I make a motion that be adjourned.
Actually, just for clarity, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Clerk, can you tell me the timeframe that was in Ms. Gumm's motion?
A four-to-six month timetable.
What is?
Four to six months? That was the motion?
Oh, man, I ain't doing that. I'm trying to learn how to preach.
Okay. Is, are there any questions, further questions, Councilman Gumm, Baker?
No.
I would like to rescind my motion. Okay, ma'am.
Clerk, can you give us direction on that?
Since that motion carried, I guess you need to make a motion to reconsider your previous action.
Okay. I need to make a motion to reconsider, um, amending the statement that I made about the timetable for HR. I would like to see that within three months.
You wanna see the timetable?
So what I'm asking in, in reference to, I need HR, we're gonna release the RFP that is supposedly already drafted to put it out on the street for thirty days, but I want to see also a timetable in regards to when the process of thirty days, the next steps, to release it and then come back to the council.
Are we open for discussion? We are now, we are now open for discussion.
I, I don't think there's a realistic timeline for our HR team. We're in a budget process, but that's, that should take priority. We just told them that we need them to focus on the budget. HR's gonna be involved in that process by Friday. It's gonna be, I think, I mean...
They should already have a draft. Well, I'll have one for them.
So you...
I'm not ready.
So we're taking a vote now because we made a motion?
Call for it. Will we, okay, so we're accepting the, um, my, yeah, the amended resolution, and now we should be voting on this. Is this correct, clerk?
Yes, I believe Councilmember Gumm's motion. I didn't hear a second, but I did hear a present amendment from Councilmember Khalid to have a due date by Friday. I don't know if anybody...
I heard it recen. What happened with that?
This is a motion to reconsider her previous action.
She changed.
To kind of end to, um, ask for within, to have a thirty-day timetable to be brought back to council.
A three, a three-month timetable is brought back to council.
Three months.
The RFP will be released by Friday.
Please, can't... You do know we have to prove, don't we have, we have to prove the RFP. We, uh, so you're gonna...
Well, then we can have the draft that goes through HR, back to us by Friday.
Right.
Yes. Let's do that.
Okay.
You wanna make that amendment slightly slower?
Can we, do you, can I make a friendly amendment? Just to be fair, can we allow them, can we give them until next Friday since they have to prepare a budget for, to, for by Friday? Can we give them until, would you give them until the next, give them a week so they can focus on the budget this week?
Well, they're supposed to already have it drafted because we asked for this before. Where's HR? Did they leave or?
All they wanted us to do was...
Well, can we ask them how much time they would need, and then you may have, you might, would you ask?
Well, just, they go back and forth, um, to kind of, just, that portion down. I do recall that the HR department had a draft. And so I do think it is realistic for them to be able to issue that draft in city council by Friday. Call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Regardless, I would, please.
All right, so really quickly, I just wanna thank everybody. Really quickly, I just wanna thank everybody who's still here. Uh, they came out for, uh, they came out to McNair Middle School. Um, we did have nearly fifty men come out and walk up for all those kids. I wanna, I do wanna let people know that though we vetoed the, uh, election holiday, we are moving forward with the Day of Political Education. Uh, I'll be partnering with the SCLC, Common College Georgia, and several other groups to do an old national electoral college. Class topics will include how Fulton County School Board works and how to get stoplights and speed bumps in your neighborhood. Um, you can sign up for these classes at Khalidcares.com/electionholiday. Uh, I will be speaking at Network Nation this weekend, and, uh, other speakers include Al Gore and Senator Elizabeth Warren. And on Sunday, September third, we'll be celebrating Old National Day. I do wanna let folks know, uh, we will have a kickball game, and District Two has been, uh, recruited to challenge District Seven. Uh, there is a, there's a rumor that, uh, Councilman Baker is some kind of pro-kickball player. I'll take care of Councilman Baker, but, uh, we do need people to sign up for this, uh, District Six, District Seven kickball game.
I did attend Renaissance Middle School's, uh, open house on Friday. Me and six other people from our education committee. And I was really, really shocked because there was hardly any parking space on the street. The football, I mean, the ba, the basketball court, there were so many people, I could not believe it. And I know there was a time when you could go to Renaissance Middle School, and there might be six cars in the parking lot the day, you know, the, the weekend before school opened. And so, um, District Four had a table with the vendors, and then on the other side in the auditorium, uh, that's where all the parents and their kids, and it was so great to see so many people signing up for the PTA. That was really, really encouraging. Um, um, our education committee is partnering with, um, Renaissance Middle School. And the principal told us something very important, and she said, "Everyone tends to do back-to-school, and there's so many back-to-school projects, but by January, the kids no longer have supplies. So let's think about doing a holiday supply event." And so that's something that we're gonna work on. Because I couldn't go to all of the, all of the schools on, um, on Monday, which was, um, you know, the first day of school, I did send welcoming letters to all the schools on Hall Road. And although the committee will be partnering with Renaissance Middle, who will be doing different projects with the high school and the, um, elementary school. In addition to the fact that middle school is where a lot of kids have problems adjusting, and a lot of things happen in middle school before you even get, uh, to high school, so that's another reason why we chose the middle school. Um, the Economic Development Committee had their first meeting. Uh, that was encouraging. There are seven people, uh, on that committee. The community engagement.
Everyone, for the successes that we had in District Two, um, this week especially, I wanna thank the schools for, um, welcoming, welcoming me on back-to-school day. It was great meeting the parents and being there for the, um, the students, so I, I really enjoyed that. But I wanna use my personal points of privilege just to discuss a few things. Um, I'm not pleased with how we have been behaving as a council or how we are talked about in the community. As you can see, a blind man can see that it's a lot of dissension that is going on. Okay? Um, it's embarrassing to me as a resident, and it's embarrassing to me as a member of the council. Um, the very same thing that we actually said we were not gonna do while we were campaigning. So we are only a little over ninety days old. We've made some significant progress, but we are often distracted by the work that really needs to be done for this city. And that keeps us from making our jobs easy, and what we're supposed to be doing is making policies. We took an oath to serve this city. We took an oath to be transparent, and we took an oath to make sure that we serve in the best interest of our residents. I have been evaluating a few things. Of course, tonight, you know, I see that there's a lack of leadership in our new city of South Fulton. I was told that we are running our districts like our own little mini cities. Why? The voters don't get to see what's going on on the inside of these walls in City Hall. The voters don't get to see possibly a delay in email responses that we have to respond back to. They don't get to see the things where we get maybe inexperienced, um, individuals hired with very high salaries. So these are the things that we have an issue with. We don't get to, the voters don't get to see that we sit in a twelve-hour or a six-hour meeting and we get documents put in front of us with no numbers, but it's a budget here. So these are things that I, I just don't feel are appropriate. And that is the reason why I say that we need to move forward with a permanent city manager. Our city deserve it. Our residents deserve it. It's time that we move our city forward. Maybe that will help with some of the dissension that is going on. I need support. I need help. And nothing is targeted to anyone, but it's time for us to move our city forward. I'm not done. I'm, I don't say much. And especially the fact that I know that we're low on resources with our police, and District Two doesn't even have a fire station that I, that I know of. There are things that we have to get done. What about economic development? There's a lot of stuff that we're not doing as a council. So again, a lack of leadership, and again, my response and a lot of my vote is not gonna be favorable to a lot of people in the community. So you can go on Facebook. You can disparage me. You can do whatever you like, but I'm here and I was elected by the people. So again, a lot of things you're not gonna be happy with. But again, I work for the city and I'm working out for the best interest of my residents and the entire city. So thank you. That's my comment. Hopefully, we will get our act together, and next week you'll see a different council. Thank you.
I'm positive we will get our act together, Councilwoman Gumm.
Thank you.
And so, um, I, I wanna thank everybody for coming out. Had a very successful back-to-school, um, got to be, of course, at my home school and off elementary school. Um, I also wanna congratulate Councilwoman Gumm and Willis, Willis, on your back-to-school event. You did a wonderful job. It was great to come, stop by and see you all in action. Um, in terms of District One, we had a great turnout for our first town hall meeting at Wood Creek Library, as well as great, um, representation at the sanitation, solid waste, um, town hall meeting. I heard your feedback, um, and we're looking forward to incorporating that in the final RFP that's issued. And continue to, um, reach out to me with your questions and concerns, and I'll continue to respond. Thank you.
I wanna thank, um, the residents who stayed until ten o'clock and the ones who actually came out and acted. I appreciate you staying engaged. We want you to continue to come to our city council meetings. I wanna thank all of our, uh, corporate partners and business partners who, uh, helped, uh, derelict two thousand book bags and school supplies, um, for District Two and District Three. Uh, with those supplies, I was able to serve all three, elementary and middle school, um, in my district. Camp Creek Middle School, um, Seagull Elementary School, and also, uh, Wood Creek Elementary School. And I was able to go into the community, Hickory Park Community, and, uh, co-host along with teachers and principals a, um, a back-to-school event. So the two thousand book bags, uh, went directly to the students in District Two and Three. And I plan to do it bigger and better next year. Thank you for the residents who donated, and again, all of the corporate, uh, businesses and, uh, partners and the South Fulton Chamber of Commerce for partnering with me. And I wanna thank all the employees of the city of South Fulton for doing a good job. I know that you all have limited resources. I know that you were short staff. But for the, um, for the, uh, limited resources and for the short period of time that we have been in the city, less than a hundred days, I think you were doing impeccable... job. And, uh, I will compliment you, I, uh, whenever I can, uh, our residents appreciate you, and, um, you know, like every organization, there is, uh, room for improvement, there's room for improvement. Uh, I didn't, I fought for us to become a city, and this was a five-year battle for me, and I want us to be successful, we will be successful. And, um, the employees who are not doing a good job, there will be, um, I mean, there's a process, and I just feel that we should discuss that behind doors, not out in public. Thank you.
Good evening, um, I would just, I'm gonna be very short, I would like to thank my community, uh, in District Five, um, Six, and Seven, for coming out on Saturday, we had a beautiful time, um, I am kinda disappointed I didn't get my command, um, station, uh, from police, nor did fire show up. No ma'am. But anyway, um...
Basically, I said we're nobody.
Yeah, okay, we good. But anyway, um, I'd like to thank, uh, two of my ambassadors, and they're still here, and that's Calvin Bennett and Jamar Bryant, they're my, they got my back, and I know they got my back. Um, uh, and I would also like to thank, um, is it the, what you call them, these? The watchdogs. They brought it to my attention, so I called, um, uh, the Ethics Board, and only to find out that Mrs. McLeod, is that her name, Brenda McLeod, had given my disclosure to Mark Baker. What's her name? Mark, Mark, uh, Maxie.
Maxie.
Maxie. Okay. When we transitioned over, yeah, and, but the bottom line was, I did what I was supposed to do. And I am a transparent person, and that's why I say, from the mayor to the city council to the city manager, I wanna see that everybody's gonna do what they're supposed to do, okay? And that's all. So if you all wanna see my paperwork, there it is, but watchdogs, go put that on your, on your thing. I'm cleaning. Thank you.
Really, uh, last week, I just wanna say, um, thank y'all for sticking in with us. Um, I just wanna say for the record, uh, I know from experience that when you feel strongly about certain things, people get emotional, you know? But when you feel really strongly about things, you get commotional. And I want you to understand and, and, and look at us and notice that y'all elected us, and we're commotional, because we're only emotional about what's going on in us, in our city, and in our various districts. So, when you see us going hard for what we believe, it's one of those things, because that you put us here to do, and you better believe everybody up there, that they're stating and they're standing strong on what they believe, regardless of how subjective it may be to the person to their left or their right. Luckily, I don't have anyone to my left. So, with that, I would like to say, uh, on August nineteenth, we are having, uh, the Future South Fulton Forum at Flatshoe Library, ten a.m., myself, Councilman Khalid, please come out, uh, we're gonna, uh, provide some services and some people, uh, I think, deputy chief has agreed to come, and we're gonna have, uh, a lot of que- questions answered, uh, to our districts there. Um, I wanna reiterate, I did go to all seven of those schools, I went to Bear Creek Renaissance, Lashley Hughes, Everly Sea West, McNair, and, um, Renaissance Elementary as well, and I met with Jeff Rose yesterday, the superintendent of Fulton County Schools, and he's eager to come to one of our meetings, and I will, uh, advise him that I will assist in facilitating that, because a lot of our issues in our communities are concerning the schools, and I have cause, you know, that are really, you know, we just like, hopefully when we have our, uh, uh, election education, that we can share and let people know where to go to, uh, assist themselves. With that, I would like to say, thank you, and, um, I appreciate y'all's support and just hanging in with us, we're doing everything we can. Thanks.
I'd like to make a motion that we officially adjourn.
Thank you, world changer. They gave us some...
All in favor?